Okay, everyone.
Recording in progress.
Welcome to the June 28th meeting of the Pacifica City Council. There is a closed session item pursuant to Government Code Section 549576 Conference Conference with Labor Negotiator. Our negotiators are going to be Davis and Charles.
Sue, Michelle Kenyon's an attendee. Can they move her up?
I think we're going to check for public comment and then retire to a closed session. So, City Clerk, do we have any public comment for this item?
Mayor Beckmeyer, I don't see any hands raised for public comment on this item at this time.
Okay, then we will retire to closed session and return with a report out. Thank you. The 8th, we did have a closed session item. And City Attorney, do we have any reportable action?
No reportable action, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. Then we'll move on to our attendants. City Clerk?
Councilmember Big Stick.
Present.
Councilmember Vatterlas.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yeah.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Sure. And I'll lead a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay.
Mayor Beckmeyer, if you'd like me to make a few announcements regarding tonight's meeting format?
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
This meeting is being held by video conference with no physical location open to the public. The public can observe and participate in the meeting via the Zoom link provided in the agenda or by phone to the dial-in number and webinar ID provided in the agenda. This meeting may also be observed live on local TV channel 26 or online at www.cityofpacifica.org/live. For this meeting, live verbal public comments may be made through participation by Zoom. For members of the public participating via Zoom, use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak on an agenda item or during oral communications when the mayor calls upon that item. For those participating by phone, use star nine to raise your hand to request to speak. The city clerk or management assistant will call upon speakers at the appropriate time and allow you to unmute after calling you by screen name or the last four digits of your phone number if you're dialing in. For dial-in users, star six will unmute yourself. Please clearly state your full name for the record at the start of your public comment. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting, but will be made part of the written record and provided to council members. Email comments are not monitored live during the meeting. Those received by 4:00 p.m. today were provided to council members and posted to the city's website. The format of this meeting may be altered, or the meeting may be canceled if needed. You may check on the status of the meeting by visiting the city's website at www.cityofpacifica.org for any updates.
All right, thank you very much. We have a few special presentations this evening, one of which is Beach Bites Bingo. And I'm looking for our friend Kathleen Courtney from the Economic Development Committee. I don't know, Kathleen, if we have Archie from the resource, I mean, from the Chamber of Commerce tonight or not. I know you can ably handle it all on your own, so I'm going to go ahead and give you the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for having me do this presentation. This is the highlight of my every two weeks. So, we have quite, we have a new program, or we have a new, a new angle to our program, Beach Bites Bingo. And first of all, just for the people that are here that do not know, Beach Bites Bingo is created to support our local restaurants and small businesses. And I've been able to pass out six $50 gift certificates to, to the various winners. And there will be another winner tonight. And these gift certificates are from our local vendors, Floris and Refresh Nail were the last two that I just handed out. So, without further ado, because I know that there might even be some of the people waiting to see, I want to, let's see, I'm sorry, I just have to shift over to the Wheel of Name. This is a bigger week, by the way. All right, let's see how we do. Oh, okay, here we go. The Wheel of Names is spinning, and we are landing on... Michelle. Michelle, you are the winner. This has a little, let me find myself again. Congratulations, Michelle Rodriguez. You are the winner of Beach Bites Bingo. And everybody, please know that if you didn't win tonight, you will be in, oh, that's my cat. You will be entered into the next drawing. And that is the new take that we've done, is we're going to keep your entries going every week. So you have many, many chances to win. So I urge all of you to take a look at Pacifica Beach Bites Bingo. Visit pacifica.com, I do believe. Thank you, everybody. Congratulations, Michelle.
Thank you very much, Kathleen. We'll see you again in a couple of weeks. Everyone, go, go to restaurants. Make sure you fill out your card and submit a picture of your receipts, and hopefully you'll be a winner next time. All right, let's move on to proclamations. City Clerk Coffee, do you have proclamations to put up for us? We are, this week, very happy to acknowledge Parks Make Better, Parks Make Life Better Month for the month of July, and another special presentation with regard to our parks specifically. So we'll start with the Parks Make Life Better Month. Whereas the importance of access to local parks, recreation, trails, open space, and facilities serve as a respite for all Pacificans, something that has become even more important during COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas parks and recreation creates memorable experiences through engaging virtually and physically distance programs, creative online events, and new learning opportunities designed to keep families engaged while stay-at-home orders were in place and beyond. And whereas parks and recreation promotes physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed fitness, play, and activity. And whereas our community can enjoy programs, parks, beaches, and facilities, which are provided, cared for, and maintained by the Department of Public Works, the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Department, and our many volunteers, and that thousands of Pacificans of all ages benefit from the wide range of services provided by the city's Child Care, Recreation, and Senior Services Divisions. And whereas Parks, Beaches, and Recreation staff are working together to build a healthy, inclusive, and connected community through positive social and recreational experiences. And whereas the city of Pacifica urges all of its residents to recognize that parks and recreation enrich the lives of its residents and visitors while adding value to the community's homes and neighborhoods. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Pacifica hereby proclaims July 2021 as Parks Make Life Better Month in the City of Pacifica, and challenge our citizens to get connected by taking advantage of our city's parks, beaches, and recreational opportunities. Done this 28th day of June 2021. So, do we have, shall we go on and do the second one, and then have all of our comments at the same time? Does that seem like a good idea, since we're both in the same vein? Okay, we'll go ahead with that. And this is a very, very exciting and special, and I'm looking for my copy, there it is, proclamation. Very, very special time for us. Proclamation of the City of Pacifica in recognition of the 20th anniversary of Friendship Playground. Whereas Project Play, a grassroots organization of Pacifica's citizens who saw the need for a new playground at Frontierland Park, was established in 2001 with the goal of creating a community-built playground that would be fun, safe, and attract children ages zero to 12. And whereas Project Play constructed Friendship Playground during the build days, June 13th through June 17th, 2001, with the help of over 1,200 community volunteers. And whereas Project Play raised over $150,000 in donations through fundraising and grants to pay for the design and construction of Friendship Playground. And whereas Pacifica City Council accepted the donation of Friendship Playground located at Frontierland Park from the Project Play organization on August 13th, 2001. And whereas Friendship Playground strengthens the community's image and sense of place, promotes health and wellness, provides opportunities for recreational experiences, and celebrates play. And whereas, for the last 20 years, Friendship Playground has been enjoyed by families of residents and non-residents alike. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Pacifica gratefully acknowledges Project Play and the community volunteers that made possible 20 years of recreation, health, and learning through play at Friendship Playground in Frontierland Park, forever enriching the lives of Pacifica's children and families. Done with deep appreciation this 28th day of June 2021. Everyone's clapping, even if we can't hear them all. I'm, this is just a super thrill that to have this proclamation land as it is right now. I'm really, really excited about that. So, I'd like to allow council members to make comments, and then we'll open public comment. And if Director Perez has any comments you'd like to make, please go ahead.
Okay, I'll go. I just wanted to say, Recreation Major, I do believe in the parks, and I want to thank Mike Perez and his staff, especially the preschool and the senior programs that have touched the everyday lives of more Pacificans than any other department in the city. And I think their impact is positive and good, and I think they bring a lot of quality of life to the city of Pacifica. And Friendship Playground, my kids were there, and what I thought was, I think is really cool about that is if you have two or three kids and they're different ages, there's an activity on that structure for each of them at each age. And I, to be honest, I can't believe it was 20 years ago. I still remember when it went in and when that was just like dirt and everything else. And I don't know if I even had gray hair then, you know? So, anyhow, but congratulations to Project Play, and thank you, and thank you, Mike, and your staff for the Park and Rec Department. Thanks.
Thank you. Sue Vatterlas?
I think I said this story before, but my daughter was a summer park, I don't know, supervisor. Nah, she just, they took kids on trips, and they went all these different places. And the most fun they told her they had was going up to the new playground. We still call it the new playground, so it is unbelievable that it's 20 years old. And congratulations. I mean, I am so thankful for the parks here, because I totally needed them in the times when my kids were growing up. So, thanks to everyone involved.
Thank you. Councilmember Big Stick?
Yeah, and thank you. I echo everything Mike and Sue just said. You know, having grown up in Pacifica, some of my very earliest memories are in the parks of Pacifica. And even like down in the Manor area, the little pocket parks on Palmetto, and even that little like place where the tree hangs out in front of the library by the old wastewater treatment plant. That little alcove, just walking around that lip, that cement lip around the tree as a two-year-old was a huge deal, let alone, you know, becoming older and spending a bunch of time in Frontierland Park and seeing it evolve. It, from the perspective of someone growing up with those parks, they mean a lot, and they, they are a part of what makes a Pacifican a Pacifican. So thank you for everyone who is involved in all, and thank you, Mike, for making it happen. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer?
Yeah, thank you. Our park, let me start over. PBNR, our PBNR department is so, so very special to our city and so very important to generations of people, right? Like, because I remember Frontierland Park too. And when Friendship Park went in, it was just such a beautiful, community-led, volunteer-based effort. And that really shows the strength of our community, and that strength of our community comes out in all different ways. But it's always with the people, because the volunteers just step up all the time. And it's all-inclusive too, which is a beautiful thing, because any young person can go there. And Mike, I know you're proud of your staff and all the work that's been accomplished over the years. So thank you very much.
And I'll just add, on a personal note, bringing my children to Friendship Playground, having an opportunity to participate in the build. So, you know, we feel this, you know, actual investment, physical investment. And then, you know, seeing the little tiles with their handprints and all of the, all of that, it's a joyful place. And truly, as, you know, my children have aged, my youngest just came home today, he's 22. But he was little. We would go there every day with a group of friends and play in that park. And it was very, very important to his upbringing and then growing up. So many activities have taken place in that park that are family-based. You know, we're about to have Fourth of July. Unfortunately, we're not doing our normal this year, but that's something that happens every year. The egg hunt happens every year. It's just so much that's centered around that park. And there are so many other parks in Pacifica that have those same neighborhood attachments. So I think continuously investing and reinvesting in our parks is so critical. And we are so grateful to our staff in PBNR and in Public Works for keeping them as they are. So, Director Perez, did you want to say anything, or do you want to turn it over to Catherine Lockler? What's, what's the game plan?
Sure, I'd love to say something, and then I would love to turn it over to Catherine, who's here to represent one of our founders of the Project Play. And she and I have been in contact the past few months. It's been a delight to reconnect with that project, because I was also here when it first went in, and I remember the Fourth of July when we christened it. And I also volunteered on there. And I was going to point out that when I was looking at some of the paperwork and some of the things that Councilmember O'Neil was on the committee there for Project Play back in the day. So, you know, we all have children that are, you know, my, my kids are a little bit older now, but they have gotten a lot of fun up there. And certainly, to echo what Councilmember Vatterlas said was, you know, a lot of our children, we still go up there when we were able to, pre-COVID, of course, and we're hoping to do more of in the future, is take our children that are in our camps up there and weekly and have a barbecue. But I wanted to just say something about this month being, it's being celebrated as Parks and Recreation Month throughout the country. And in particular, California is, it's, we consider Parks Make Life Better Month for July. And I wanted to make sure that on behalf of our Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Department, as well as our Public Works and its Parks Division, our Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission, as we begin reopening our programs and activities, we'd like to ask our citizens to join us in July and the summer in general to, you know, if we're taking any of our recreational opportunities for the community through our department programs, activities, events, and then, of course, all the outdoor things that have been there and have been a relief to a lot of people during COVID, the parks, the beaches, the trails. You know, we have a beautiful environment here that people can take advantage of. And we really feel like parks, beaches, and recreation are important, part of people's lives, and that they do make their life better. I just wanted to say a few things about some of our programs and our staff. Throughout the pandemic, our senior services staff have continued to serve daily lunches via our Grab and Go drive-through and Meals on Wheels programs. They're working right now for our senior center reopening plan that is scheduled right now for early September. In childcare, the school-aged children and their teachers celebrated the last day of school in the middle of June, and our preschool programs all had graduations through this month. After a year of supporting our school district and our participants with virtual learning, the childcare programs are looking forward to a fun-filled summer of some wonderful recreation activities. And one of the highlights, they're going to have a wild animal show that's visiting. The, as restrictions have loosened, we began the process of expanding existing programs and bringing back those that we had pre-COVID, in particular at the Genie Brink Pool on the Ocean High School campus. We're expanding the amount of swimmers that can come in and lap swim from one to two, and we're adding weeknights and giving swimmers more options and times to swim. And we'll see some of those things roll back even further. Adult water polo's back. Youth water polo is starting up very soon, and we're going to be hosting tournaments and skirmages in August for them. The swim team has been going strong during the most of the pandemic, and will continue practices throughout the summer. We're going to have private, semi-private, upper-level swimming lessons this summer, lifeguarding class for ages 15 and up in August, and aerobics is now available five days a week up from two days. And our Summer Adventure Camp is full with 60 campers, and they're separated in three groups of 20, and they're doing two-week sessions. And they're looking forward to doing a lot of activities outside, but arts and crafts as well. And one of the projects that the camp is working on and has been working on since they started was decorating these wooden tiles that are going to be placed at Friendship Playground. So they're very excited about that for celebrating the 20th anniversary. And I just wanted to thank our hard-working and dedicated staff, and I appreciate all the comments from the council. But our staff have put in a lot of effort in planning and preparing for the summer. It's been a very difficult year for everyone. I really want to acknowledge their frontline staff. They are frontline, particularly those with the childcare facilities, the youth programs, our food service, and even at the pool, our aquatics programs. They continue to contribute to making essential programming available to our community during this whole year. And we just want to invite everybody to kind of get, get connected. And that's our, that's our catchphrase, get connected to the programs, the events, the services, outdoor spaces and places, and the opportunities, and join us as we work towards a continued reopening, and in some cases, a reimagining of what Pacifica has to offer. And I thank you very much. And I'd like to turn it over to Catherine to talk a little bit about Project Play. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And I apologize for, for being a few minutes late. I was trying to get my background set up and, and find my original Project Play t-shirt, which, which has hung around for 20 years, which is, both, both things have hung around for 20 years. So that's been great. And, and I agree, Mike, it's been my pleasure to reconnect with you over the last few months, as we've been talking about what we could maybe do during a pandemic to celebrate this milestone. And, and thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer, and the city council members. I'm, I'm really honored that you made this proclamation. I don't really know what the verb is for that. But on behalf of the former Project Play organization, and especially Doreen Murphy and Lisa McGinnis, who were co-coordinators with me, and the, you know, about 1,200 volunteers who supported building Friendship Playground, we're just, we're just really honored that, that our, our city has just, you know, kept it going. And we truly appreciate the support of Mike and, and his, the Parks Beacon Beach, Beaches and Recreation Department, and PBNR Commission, City Council, and, and, and of course, the Public Works Department, in first building the playground, and then, and then the maintenance of the playground over the last 20 years, which is not, you know, it's not insignificant. And it's just really been our pleasure to see and hear about so many children and families who have enjoyed the playground since 2001. I know we're all looking forward to many more years and decades, hopefully, there. And, and, you know, I'm sorry, Lisa and Doreen couldn't be here this evening, but they, they also wanted to personally express their support. And we just hope that once things are able to open up a little bit more, that we can have a large gathering at the park, at the playground, and, and reminisce, and also look forward to the youngsters that are, that are just getting, just starting out there at the playground. So thank you all so much, and I hope to see you soon at the playground.
Thank you. Thanks so much. And let us check with our city clerk to see if we have public comment. Do we see any hands raised for this item?
I'm seeing hands being raised right now.
So if you want to speak on this item and your hand is raised, our city clerk coffee will be calling on you. If this isn't your item and you want to put your hand down, that's fine too.
The first speaker will be Suzanne Moore, followed by Gloria Stovall.
Good evening. Welcome back, Sarah. Suzanne Moore. This week, our county received an alarming report from the Center on Society and Health at Virginia Commonwealth University that the U.S. life expectancy dropped dramatically during the COVID pandemic. When compared with other industrial, industrialized nations, the U.S. spends more on healthcare, yet experience an eight-time the average decrease in longevity during COVID. This country's longevity decreased on an average of 1.9 years, but even more precipitously for blacks at 3.3 years and Latinx for 3.9 years. The U.S. declin- The US decline, as explained by Dr. Stephen Wolf, is solely due to socio-economic determinants that impact health, including housing stability. I'm proud that I live in a community in which our council is resolved to work with the county to create safe parking. In a time in which low-income housing in Pacifica is difficult to find, I appreciate that our council recognizes the need to create a stepping stone for our unhoused, to safely rest, have access to hygiene and healthcare, receive case management and counseling to achieve permanent housing. I've talked to a few Pacificans these last few weeks when phone banking. Many are very grateful that they have come through the pandemic well and financially sound, but they are aware that others are not so fortunate. In our community, some residents are still unemployed or underemployed. In our community, some increased their debt during the pandemic in order to pay for food and shelter. In our community, some have suffered from stress, isolation and physical illness this past year. May I recommend the following? First, support a safe parking program as a path to permanent housing, and let our council know you support a safe parking program. Second, support federal, state, county and local efforts for an equitable recovery during this pandemic. Advocate for those most egregiously impacted, our essential workers, those of low income, including low-income families, elders on a fixed income, or disabled. Acknowledge racial disparity in that our black and brown neighbors are more greatly impacted. Through no fault of their own, these neighbors are facing formidable increased debt. Contact your legislators with your concerns. Lastly, our city should pass an urgency ordinance to extend the eviction moratorium to allow for more time for economic recovery here in Pacifica. The state has yet to pass AB eight thirty-two, which requires a two-thirds vote. Please provide a safety net for Pacificans and pass an urgency ordinance in the event the sa- state fails to do so. Thank you.
Hey, I need to stop here and um, make a statement about the purpose of this portion of public comment. Um, I was expecting to hear about parks, and so if there is anyone who has something to say about parks, that's what I was hoping to hear from at this point, and then we would move on to our consent and our um, oral communications. So I think we need to take a pause. And if the people who have their hands up at this point are speaking on parks, please speak. And if you're not, please wait. I, I thought I made that clear, but I'm sorry that I didn't.
So our next speaker will be Gloria Stovan to, to speak on um, the special agenda items for the proclamations on parks.
Um, yes, I just wanted to say that as a former Park Beach and Rec employee, and as once a Park Beach and Rec Commissioner, I thank Mike Perez and his staff for all the work they do and the fun things that can and are created by this wonderful department in our city. We are so lucky, so lucky to have such a, a department that is creative and yet works so hard to bring uh, special services, you know, seniors and um, all the uh, childcare issues that have to be taken care of by the city. Thank you so much, Park Beach and Rec, and to Mike Perez and his staff. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we're gonna close this portion unless there's any other hands raised. City Clerk copy?
Mayor, I don't see any other hands raised for this item.
All right, very well. Thank you. We're gonna close that portion and bring it back. And again, I really want to say um, huge thanks and appreciation, Mike, to you. But as you pointed out to all of the staff, all the frontline staff, all the volunteers, the commissioners, the, the public work staff who keep this together for us. Um, it's an amazing thing that we do in this community with very little money. And um, and I'm really proud to be part of it. So thank you very much for all that you've done and your leadership and all of your staff and volunteers.
Thank you very much.
And if I could just really quickly say, um, Catherine, it's so nice to see you, and I appreciate all of your passion around this project. I've been able to feel it, you know, through emails and so, and seeing your background. I, I'm just, it makes me feel happy, and we need things to be happy about. So thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thanks, Catherine. Really do appreciate all that you've done. I know it was hard in this weird time, but thanks for pulling it off. And I look forward to the big event. Keep us posted.
Yes, and we're looking forward to having the go-ahead to be able to plan a big event.
Well, we'll, we'll be hearing about it.
Our state's now open, right? So.
Yep, so it'll be coming soon. Stay tuned. All right. Thanks so much, you guys. Really appreciate it. Okay, council members?
I think our mayor has dropped off. So we'll give her another minute to come back on before we go ahead and head into the consent agenda. There she is.
That was.
That was quick. You got back on quick.
When I came back. Okay, and here I am again. So what I was saying is, to myself apparently, um, is we have quite a large agenda tonight, council, and I do want to try to be procedural and um, you know, certainly we'll be taking public comment, but I want to work through the consent calendar first. Um, and so what I need to do, and I'm really working on getting this right, so Mayor Protem, back me up. Um, my understanding and what I expect and would like right now is to hear from any council members that would like to pull any item if there is an item that needs to be pulled.
I'd like to pull item number six and make the comments on item seven.
So we are only pulling item six according to Councilmember O'Neil.
I don't see any other hands.
And, and just so I'm clear, we can make comments on other items without pulling them, right?
Correct, correct.
I'd like to make a comment on item number three.
Right now, we're just asking what items do you want to be pulled? And those are the only items that will be pulled from the consent calendar to be discussed at a future time. So right now, we only have item six that is being pulled from the agenda.
All right. And so.
So I moved that we approved the agenda of minus item six.
Public input?
Oh, public input. Is that what you were saying, Tiger?
About to say is, you see if we have public input on a, on any of the consent agenda items, which are items one through seven.
Well, one through five and seven.
And seven, not.
All items except item six.
All items except item six, if you have a public comment. But city attorney, are we asking for a public comment? Are we asking for them to make the public comment?
We're asking for public comments on all items on the consent agenda, except item six.
Okay, they can give the comment, not just say they want to make a comment.
Correct. They, they are, they should be raising their hands now to speak on any item on the consent agenda, except item six.
At this moment, I'm seeing two hands raised. City Clerk copy?
First up, we have Remy Tan.
And, and we should ask the speaker which item on the consent calendar he wishes to make a comment upon.
Hi, this is Remy Tan. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, Remy Tan, um, uh, Pacific Manor, um, one comment on item number seven, which is the um, which is the uh, moving of the city offices to the community center. And I feel that should be actually pulled off the agenda. Um, you said actually in conjunction with item number six, um, which is um, which is the, actually the new civic center uh, project. So I'm not sure why the, you know, that didn't get pulled as well. Um, because it is, you know, a quarter-million-dollar item.
So at this, at this point, you may make a comment on items one through five or seven, but we are not discussing item six at this moment.
Yes, understood. I, I am talking about item number seven, which is the uh, temporary move of the city, city hall, and I feel that that should get pulled and um, and discussed with item six. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Our next speaker is Robert Jameson. May that be yourself.
If you're speaking, Mr. Richardson, we can't hear you. Maybe check your mic. Still not hearing an audio from you. Mr. Montemeyer, can you try muting him and then try unmuting and see if that helps on your end?
He's appeared again. Maybe he's down below.
Let's try.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, but you can't unmute the first one because we're getting an echo.
Okay. I'm not sure which one I'm on now. Let me mute this one.
One with your picture.
Yeah. How's it now? Still an echo. Still an echo. Hold on. This one's weird.
Oh, I think we got it.
Is it? No, it's still zoomed. This is my three-minute church, is it?
It's not. We haven't started the clock. Don't worry.
You're okay. Take your time.
Take your time. Technology is fun. Okay, so now the echo's gone, but so is the audio.
Josh, do you have any um, suggestions for him?
Maybe call him.
If Mr. Richardson, I see his mic is now back on, so.
Okay. Yeah, how is it now? Can you hear me?
Great.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay. I think the problem was my phone was on also.
Right.
Locked on twice, yeah.
Okay, so can you let us know which item on the consent agenda? We should not include item six.
I forget now, it was so long ago. No, it was item number seven.
Okay. Please go ahead.
Okay, um, item number seven is the move, the temporary move, which is, in my opinion, totally unnecessary. Um, the public has been, been told for the last year that there's a mold problem at city hall. Finally, yesterday, I saw a report from an inspection company that the city had hired, an air quality reporter. It wasn't even actually a report. It was written down by city staff, and all it said was a common type of mold was found only in the women's bathroom, and no toxic black mold was found at all in city hall. So one, well, I don't know why the city manager closed both bathrooms for a common mold that's not dangerous at the levels it was reported at. And why is this? The main thing is, why is the city moving uh, staff to the community center, disrupting all the people down there, which half of them I've talked to don't even know this is happening yet? Um, why are they moving them down there when the renovation to city hall might not happen for a year or two, or it might not ever happen at all? So we've got a couple of things going on here. We've got, unless, unless the city has another report that I don't see, another report on the air quality in the building, they're kind of misleading, or no, they're not kind of, they're misleading the public, saying that the building's unsafe because of mold in the bathroom, and why the city manager, again, closed both bathrooms, I have no idea. Everybody's got mold in their house in Pacifica, whether you see it or not, it's there. And we can't like, close all our houses, and you can't close city hall because of it. They're not renovating the city hall for at least a year. The, it's, the project's only in preliminary stages, planning stages. It's not finalized, and it's not approved, and that'll take maybe a year or two, or never, might not ever happen. So that means the city hall employees will be stuck in the community center, disrupting all those people that are down there. The seniors are finally getting back in there after COVID. Classes are gonna start. Um, and they're out of there. I mean, they're totally disrupting the place. That's our community center. That's not your civic center, okay? I'm, I'm not even dealing with the eleven-and-a-half-million-dollar city hall that's proposed. We refurbished that, which we really can't afford. I'm just saying, right now, you need to vote no on this move. Um, and if you don't vote no on the move, there's, could be some serious implications as far as misleading the public and um, ethics violations uh, having to do with that whole thing, telling people there's mold in the, there's dangerous mold, okay? That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm not seeing any more hands raised at this time.
Right then, I will close this portion of public comment, bring it back to council. City Attorney?
I believe we have a motion and a second on the floor already to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, I'd like to make a comment on item seven. I will be voting yes for seven because I do believe um, that the staff needs to get out of the functionally obsolete city hall that we have at this point. Um, there, the ratty windows, leaky roofs, the poor electrical outlets, the poor, the non-ADA compliance and structural, probable structural damage. I don't believe it's a safe working environment, so I will be, this is the comment I wanted to make, is I will be supporting item number seven.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm gonna call the question unless. Go ahead, Councilmember Bigstick.
Um, thank you, and I, I would favor getting a little bit more staff information about item number seven before voting on it. I don't know if um, I need to put a second motion on the floor in order to pull it from consent, or if I can ask questions without pulling it.
You can, you can ask questions or make comments without pulling it. It's, it's, it's not pulled.
Okay. So in that case, if, before we vote, I could ask a few questions just to try and get a little clarity. I'd appreciate it.
Sure, please go ahead.
Thank you, and um, uh, city manager, maybe if you could tell us a little bit more about mold and a little bit more about why it is we're moving. Um, and I, I'll have some more questions about the space itself after. Thank you.
Sure. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Bigstick. I, I'd be happy to speak about this. A- as the council is aware, and as goes back uh, several uh, through several city council meetings, when the uh, mold claim first came forward, the city did extensive testing throughout all of, all of the rooms in both the P and P, the Parks and Planning Building, as well as in the city hall. And the uh, levels of mold that were deemed present in uh, the bathrooms and the break room in city hall and several offices in the P and P building uh, required us to, in the interest of, of public uh, you know, employee and public health and safety, you know, for visitors to the buildings to close those. And that's been the case for uh, over a year since the fall of two thousand and nineteen. At that point in time, the process began to evaluate the path forward, and we assembled the options for council, brought forth to the council, the range of options from a quick remediation, which of course, wouldn't solve the long-term uh, problems a- at the civic center, to the minimalist remediation renovation option, to, you know, larger renovation options. And the council directed that we pursue the conceptual design and develop the funding strategy for the minimalist renovation option. And then we held successive uh, meetings all about those options. And this renovation project, as Councilmember O'Neil just spoke about, will uh, solve for uh, the long-term, the health and safety issues related to the air. will solve for the long term, the health and safety issues related to the air quality in the civic center.
Thank you. The speaker was inquiring as to documentation. Is there a way we can point him toward some of the some of the documentation we were working off of to come to the conclusion that we absolutely need to move sooner than later?
So when the 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 air studies that the city had performed, when the, you know, determination was made about mold being present in certain of the rooms, the, you know, because this is an active claim with insurance and the potential of, you know, other legal matters related to this, the city attorney's office is is who conducted under under confidentiality, the the actual air investigations. So the this, I have summarized the results and the consequences of those investigations. But those those reports are actually confidentially protected at this point in time.
I appreciate that clarification, and my last couple of questions, I think, are pretty quick. But just in terms of the space that's going to be occupied in the community center, my understanding is it's two rooms toward the back of the complex, the dance studio and the preschool area. Is my understanding correct?
That's correct. Yeah, the the design, the design and and working with the Parks Beaches and Recreation Director and all of the staff at the senior center was very intentional to minimize the programming impact on the community center. And of course, part of this is is during COVID as reopening is occurring, so the the activities aren't as present. But even at full activity, and Director Perez could speak in more detail to this if the council desired, is is designed that it will be a minimal, if any, interference to the upcoming programming at the senior center. The the program, the childcare enrichment, or I I don't, I, Director Perez should speak to the preschool enrichment program, was not very, very much used, and it's not childcare. It's very minimal hour enrichment, and that's the area that we're primarily taking over.
And I do want to ask that follow-up question as my last question, but just so I'm crystal clear, the vast majority of the community center will still be serving the public, including the big main room in the front, correct?
Yes, that's right. And 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 if if the if it's your preference, Director Perez can elaborate on those points.
Absolutely, and I'd just like to know which programs, if any, will actually be impacted by those two rooms being occupied over the duration of time they are. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening, council members. Just echoing what city manager Woodhouse said is that we have been very intentional about planning for minimal impact. I I don't think it's fair to say that there will be no impact. There's gonna be twenty-five employees coming down and working in the building. And we're all coming back from being off for fifteen months or more by that time when when we invite the public back in. So there will be some adjustment. But we would not have moved forward with this idea had we not talked with our staff down there and our former recreation manager that was there to say that we could indeed utilize the time and space to make sure that we could accommodate the senior services activities that we had pre-pandemic. Whether they all continue, you know, will be a choice for them. We've done surveys and such, but we are planning on definitely using the big room. That's not going away in the front. We have to serve lunch out of there. And it also serves, once we do get back to normal, there'll be weekend and evening uses for that. I know councils had many public meetings there pre-pandemic as well. So we certainly are planning to work around all of those things and and make them happen. There there will be an impact. We won't have enrichment preschool during the time. The dance studio will not be available because that is a space that we're gonna use, and then other areas to limit the impact, we're, you know, relocating certain things, and there'll be a little bit of shared space as well. But our our goal is to is to serve the seniors to the best of our abilities and have, you know, the the slightest impact we can have. Again, knowing that you put twenty-five more people down there, there's gonna be an impact and there'll be a different business. But we're we're working on all of those things. And I think a lot of folks are very anxious about getting back to the community center. And we are too, and staff is anxious about getting back to work. So there's a lot of things going on here, but we're gonna do our best to make sure that the impact is very minimal.
Thank you very much. And I I also had a coworker who was asking me about some of the impacts to senior services also. So I think it's really important that we accentuate the fact that those services will will largely not be effective. Thank you.
All right, thanks very much for answering those questions.
Councilmember Vado Las has your hand up.
Please go ahead.
Hi, I was wondering if this purchase that we're making, the furniture will be used in the new site when we move. We're not just purchasing furniture and then having to get all new furniture when we move back. Is that correct?
That's correct. It'll be repurposed in the new civic center.
Thank you.
So there was a a comment about outreach to the people at the community center, so I'm assuming that the community center know that this is happening. Just wanted to reiterate that part.
Yes, and Director Perez can probably speak more specifically about what that outreach was.
So we have monthly meetings with the seniors in Action Advisory Council. Of course, this has been something that's happened. We've been talking about it. Council's been talking about it. But also keep in mind that we have not gotten the green light to go forward either. So at the one hand, we're talking about it a lot, but this has not been fully decided officially yet until this meeting, correct? So that's one of the things that we're we're working with. And we talked to some seniors this last week, and we heard a lot about not hearing enough from us. And we are going to correct that and make sure that they do hear a lot from us. And after tonight, they'll be more official. We have a newsletter. There's some general information that goes out in that. And then I'll be visiting with them at their monthly meeting. The staff, we're hoping gets in the building in August, and that's why we'd say, you know, that we can get the seniors in there by, you know, September. That's kind of our plan for right now.
Okay. I'm not seeing any other hands from council members. So I'm gonna call the question. I think we're ready for a vote. Mr. Montemeyer, are you doing the roll call or is city clerk coffee?
I had a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Beer, and I didn't catch the council member seconding the motion.
I believe it was Vado Las.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Vado Las. I'll now call the roll call vote for the consent calendar. Items minus item number six. Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vado Las.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Okay, the consent calendar minus item number six passes with a vote of five to zero.
All right, then we're gonna discuss item six. O'Neil.
Do you wanna have comments for, public comments first, or?
If you like, we can do that, sure.
Yeah, a couple of hands up.
Okay. Mr. Montemeyer, will you be doing the public comment?
Yes, we have two hands raised for speaker while we wait for the timer to be up. I'm just wondering, my speakers, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand at this time.
I just wanna reiterate, this is on item six from the consent agenda, not all oral communications. This is specifically limited to item six on the consent agenda. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Christine Bowles, followed by Gloria Stefan. Christine, you may now unmute yourself.
Good evening, council and staff. My name's Christine Bowles. I'm a licensed architect and have been attending all the city council meetings thus far regarding the civic center. I have a number of concerns about the project budget and scope of work and want to make sure that we have a clear financial path forward before you approve the 1.25 million for additional design fees. Can I ask if a building official who's familiar with codes and required updates when you're remodeling has looked at the detailed cost estimates to see if anything is missing? As you know, both of these buildings are old and have a lot of deferred maintenance. I'm concerned because exterior rehabilitation is listed as an add alternate, not included in the base price. Work on the exterior will absolutely be required, some by code, some by prudent work to protect the investment you are making on the interior. Has a thorough inspection been done by a licensed contractor to evaluate the structures and provide a detailed pest report? For example, the stucco is cracking all over the building. Is it enough to patch the cracks or is underlying moisture barrier compromised? The northwest corner has stucco missing, and I can put my fingernail through the wood, which indicates dry rot. How extensive is the dry rot? Painting is paint is peeling all over the exterior. Has it been checked for lead? As this will substantially increase your costs. As you're changing the building envelopes with a new elevator at Tower at City Hall and window changes to planning built to the planning building, the buildings will both be required to comply with Title 24 energy regulations, which are quite restrictive in California. The windows in City Hall are single-pane aluminum, and I have a hard time seeing how the project will be able to comply without changing all the windows. That alone could easily be an extra $200,000 cost. Site improvements are also not included in these construction costs. Besides the additional drainage to meet the C3 requirements, there'll need to be grading and ramps added at all required exits, not just the main entrance. Handicapped access accessibility does not just refer to people in wheelchairs, stairs, railings, doorways, hardware, all must be upgraded. Again, this is a basic life safety building code requirement. The report says that the project budget is already thirteen percent over budget. The math is actually wrong and should read fifteen percent. How much are you actually allowed to approve today with only $10 million accounted for? And where is the contingency funding? Remodels with unknown structural and dry rot issues should allow at least twenty percent more funding for work. As I've said previously, I'm disappointed at this approach the council has chosen. Our greatest resource is not the buildings, but the land, and the current design misses opportunities for visionary solutions to serve our community as well as staff. I love Councilmembers O'Neil, O'Neil's idea of adding affordable housing to the project. We've not built any affordable housing in at least the last sixteen years. And I don't see how we can possibly start now and meet the extensive Reno requirements without looking at every opportunity. And where's the railcar? I see no mention of it despite the council affirming it would have a place in the plans. And lastly, I just want to comment on the previous item seven. Remy Tan had asked for it to be pulled so that he could speak, and he was not allowed to make his comments. I think you're out of order in that. Thank you.
You, Christine. Our next speaker is Gloria Stefan, followed by Robert Hutchinson. Gloria, you may now unmute yourself.
Yes, good evening, Gloria Stefan. I really didn't have anything to put down other than the fact that the two buildings that we're talking about, the City Hall and the community center, both have actually issues that real safe, well, safety issues as well. Jim Lang, when he was working at the community center, he showed me cracks in the walls that were pretty, pretty large. And he said he'd been sending emails and even put in a, what do you call it? A maintenance, I can't think of the word, but anyway, he was having difficulty getting anyone from City Hall to really take and pay attention to it. I definitely, though, feel City Hall needs improvement, and I know it's gonna be cost. And it and the way things are now, nothing's gonna be inexpensive. It's gonna be very expensive. But the city's always crying. It's always crying that they have no money. But I guess we've got priorities that need to be taken care of, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Robert Hutchinson, followed by Remy Tan. Robert, you may now unmute yourself.
We're not hearing your audio. Um, perhaps, Mr. Montemeyer, you could go back.
Okay, how's that?
Oh, you're there.
It just said unmute. I unmuted. Okay, can I start? Okay. The same problem with.
Please, one second. Mr. Montemeyer, can you please reset the clock for Mr. Hutchinson?
There you go.
There you go. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. I have the same problem with this number six, seven. Mr. Woodhouse just told you a story about mold in four rooms in the building and says, oh, but I can't show you the documents that that show that. Well, I think council needs to see those documents before they make a decision. And don't rely just on Mr. Mr. Woodhouse's say-so that there's mold, dangerous mold, he just said, in four rooms. Health affecting mold, because the document posted on the September, I think it was 2020 meeting only said there was some common mold found in the women's bathroom. And it actually said there was no dangerous black mold found in the building. So like I said, I don't know if there's another report, but council needs to not take his word for it to actually see these reports. I understand there's a conveniently a lawsuit. They're afraid of a lawsuit, so they don't want to show us the public these documents. But council needs to see these documents and verify that there is actually dangerous mold found by the air quality people, not by, not by employees, found by the air quality report people in the building and not take their word for it. He also went on to state there's cracks in the windows and water leakage. Well, fix them. That's not a reason to close, to move everybody prematurely into the community center and spend $200,000 on that. That's no reason. And I've heard from several people on next door that they're canceled classes at the community center because of this. So it does affect a lot of people. Once again, you can't just take one person's word for it that there's dangerous mold in the, in, I mean, you're asking for a lawsuit by saying that, just saying that. The report that's posted says there's no mold. There's no dangerous mold. So what's that about? I'd I'd like to know. I don't I don't understand the whole thing, and I'm not the only one. A lot of people in town think this is crazy to move people. Now, if there is no dangerous mold, you can save yourself $200,000 and maybe put that money towards the pier, which nobody seems to think you guys have the money for. The Coastal Commission is about ready to to come down on that because the report's due pretty soon on the pier. And as far as how they're gonna fix the end of it or when they're gonna fix and have, saying the funds aren't available.
Keep your comments focused on item.
Yeah.
Six, please. Thank you.
Yeah, just don't take Woodhouse's word for it that there's mold, dangerous mold in the building in every four rooms. Now, if it turns out he's not telling the truth on that, he needs to go. I'm sorry. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Remy Tan, followed by L. G. Remy, may go ahead and unmute yourself now.
Hi, Remy Tan, from Pacific Manor, also local architect. I reviewed the documents in item number six and really concerned. There was a number of items that were, they were outside the scope of work, like the lead green building portion, and there was some civil engineering portions and as well as a fire alarm portion. And that should be, in fact, all four of those items that were removed should be part of the base contract because that's what we need to have a minimal, you know, green building that's safe. I mean, fire alarms, fire life safety issues, so. And we definitely need to know about the soils and civil because we're we're basically building on a dune area. So if you add that back in, the contingency for the design is already exceeded. So I think, you know, the city needs to go back and renegotiate that contract or, you know, allow for more more fee for that contract. The other the other thing that's concerning is listening to Mr. Woodhouse is there's a lot of mold. The other, the other thing that's concerning is listening to Mr. Woodhouse is there's a lot of mold apparently in the existing building. So before we even start, there should be a complete detailed facilities or building condition report to see how bad the structure is and how, how much mold abatement may be because maybe the best solution is to tear that building down as well and start from scratch in both buildings. You know, obviously we can keep, it's better because of the embodied energy in those both buildings. But if the structure is shot and there's a toxic mold, yeah, yeah, they might have to come down. And by taking them down, we would have the opportunity to do something really big and, you know, maximizing the lot, you know, envelope that's permitted on, on those two lots. And maybe, you know, the buildings were taller, we have more room for more open space, you know, as well as the rail car, which you know, also that portion of the design was taken out and should need to be backed in to that original design. So I'm really concerned that that design contract doesn't reflect, you know, the existing conditions and what needs to be done. So I believe this should be voted down today and, and really looked at, you know, with a fine tooth comb, especially existing buildings. And also I don't understand how you can order furniture for the temporary without the architect and interior designer involved and expected to fit in the new building, which you haven't even designed. And lastly, the, there's two options that are still in the preliminary design that really should be funneled down to one option. I believe they, they talked about option two last time. So before you even go to the next phase, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have one more speaker, El Kucchi. And I also see a phone call that joined in. If you want to speak and you're calling on the phone, please press star nine. Hi, El Kucchi, you're next to speak. You may now unmute yourself.
We're not hearing your audio. It looks like your mic is muted.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. My name is Eleanor Kikuchi. I'm one of the volunteer for the senior center. I'm one of the leaders for this computer program at this, at the center. I would like to note that I voted no on the move or any expenses like the furniture because there is no real the design contract is not final. There's nothing really final. Why make a move before any final decision or there is a actual relocation plan that has been sealed and signed? So I would like to vote no on the move, the City Hall to the center. And that's, that's my comment for tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is with a phone number ending in 1606. Call listener, please state your name for the record and may now unmute yourself. You may now speak.
Good evening, Sue Degree here. Before I forget, is the discussion about the rail car dismissed? I don't see it there. So I'm a little bit questioning that. Because as mentioned before, I really think that our history is a, a great asset to our, our revenue possibilities. Surfside City, what happened there, I think, has gotten many of us worried that we do take extra caution on buildings and lands to make sure that we really have the budget to cover whatever possibilities of danger could be there. And they were told like, what, three years ago that there were possibilities? So, you know, just keeping that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more hand raised from Jim Lane. Jimmy, may now unmute yourself.
Jim, we're not hearing you.
All right. Good evening. Did you hear me now?
There you are. Yeah.
Hi, how are you? Hey, I apologize. I literally just walked in the door, realized you had this meeting tonight, so I apologize. I, I listened to the staff report nor did I come prepared. I just want to share a few concerns. Again, Eleanor Kukuchi, I just heard her speak. And again, a great volunteer who spent a lot of years and time in the computer lab. My concern is I don't understand why we still have city employees that are currently working in the building that's dangerous and why are they not already at the community center? We were talking about that plan when I worked for the city in October 2019 and they were going to be in the community center by December. I, I don't understand the delay. But as far as the furniture goes, I, I don't understand why you wouldn't be bringing the furniture in the current offices since you don't know the configurations of the new offices. Why you'd spend that much money? I don't understand. You have another resource that I use many times for the city. You have San Mateo County surplus furniture. Every other Thursday, you could go down to their warehouse and you could get this furniture. Again, I think it will get you by and no reason to spend that kind of money that's needed in the city for the project. So I would, I would encourage staff to look into that surplus program every other Thursday in San Mateo County. And again, I would like to see the consideration in the senior center reopening. And being, when I was there, we had a plan. It was going to go in the preschool area. And I don't know how accurate my information is right now, but I heard that now they're going to take us to computer lab and other areas. The computer center was, was very vibrant, but more importantly, I view the senior center as a hospital. This is an area where seniors get to volunteer, they get to socialization, their physical activities, et cetera. And they're being held locked out of there. It, it's time for everybody to come back to work. It's time for people to stay focused on reopening. It's time for us to provide a safe environment for employees to work in. But again, there's no reason to spend unnecessary funds for things that funds that are first of all, equipment that you're already working with. Why can't you transport out? Cause it needs to be removed for the either destruction, construction, remodeling, whatever it's going to be. Again, I apologize. I didn't listen to the report. But again, I welcome you to come back and let's serve the community. Thank you very much.
I'm seeing one more hand raised from C Sherman. You may now unmute yourself. C Sherman, please unmute yourself.
It just flickered, but then it stayed on. At least I'm seeing a muted microphone. Can you try to do that one more time? Okay, try now. We're still having audio problems. I wonder if we could ask C Sherman to dial in with the telephone perhaps? Cause we're not hearing your audio. I really want to make sure we include all the public comment if possible.
If you want to, I can make my comments, then we come back to Sherman afterwards.
Perhaps that would be a good idea.
Maybe have Mr. Sherman hang up and disconnect and then reconnect. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I just pulled this item from the consent calendar because I will be voting no. As I said before, when we first did the discussion on the community, on the civic center. I think, you know, by the time we pay the interest on this money, we're probably pretty close to 17, $18 million. Including the principal amount and I just feel that there, we haven't looked at all the alternatives enough that to make, that we would get more bang for our buck in our investment than we will with having two buildings left there. So I think I just wanted to make it clear why I was voting no on this consent item. So that's my piece. And I don't know if Mr. Sherman signed in or not.
I'm just checking that now. Mr. Montemeyer, did you see if Mr. or Ms. Sherman was able to hang up and then try to dial back in?
C Sherman is currently unmuted.
Not hearing an audio.
Let him know that he can make his comment now or they, they can make their comment now.
C Sherman, you can hear us. You can make your comment at this time. Not hearing it. Okay. I'm afraid, oh, I just saw another hand go up.
Yes, we have another hand up from Deborah. Okay, Deborah, you may now unmute yourself to speak.
Hi, I was calling about the senior center. We're very active in that and they've been a great asset to the community. We're really concerned about what's the impact and also how much study have the city councils done regarding the move from the City Hall to over to the community center? And, you know, 127,000 seems like a lot of money that I don't know if Pacifica has that kind of money to spend. And, you know, we'd like to see more study on that. And perhaps if it happens a few years down the road to actually, you know, make the move when that time comes rather than make a move, you know, two years in advance of, of any real plans being in force. We'd really appreciate a more thorough research of that before making any move and maintaining as many services to the public and the seniors, which it's vital. And they've done a great job in the past that they continue to do that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to try one more time for Sherman. And see if we can hear the audio.
C Sherman, you've been unmuted. Please try speaking.
Okay, not hearing audio, so I'm going to ask C Sherman to please contact the city with a written comment, which will add to the record. And I'm going to close public comment. And bring it back to council. And.
Mayor, I just wanted for the public who was not able to comment tonight. Written comments can be emailed to publiccomment@pacifica.gov.
And if you don't email, it can be dropped off in the mail slot of City Hall at 170 Santa Maria Avenue. Okay, thank you, council. Mr. O'Neil pulled this item. So there are a number of questions that have been raised. I think I saw a hand on the participants. I don't know if I did on the panelist, but I can.
I raised my hand earlier.
Okay, would you like to go ahead?
Yeah, if you don't mind, that would be great. So I feel like, so we have a staff report. It's, it's thorough, but I feel like our community might need more information. So I'm wondering if it's possible to not vote on this item tonight and bring it back with a more fuller presentation so that some of these questions that were posed tonight can be answered? Is that a possibility or?
Whoa. That was weird. Okay, so thank you for that. And I think there could possibly are other comments or questions. I know I have a few for staff. But I wanted to give council members a chance to speak first if they had anything that they wanted to ask the slides. Thank you, Mayor Pertem. I'm not seeing any other hands, so I'm going to go ahead if you don't mind. And if you want to interrupt, please just raise your hand. Okay, so what I would like, please, is to have the city manager briefly describe and reiterate what this process has been the time over which we have been studying this issue. And as one of the callers, Mr. Lang commented, he thought this move would have taken place already. This has been discussed since 2019 is the, the time he quoted. So could you please go over that briefly, city manager Woodhouse? Or, and please feel free to, you know, and bring in Director Peterson or Deputy Director Bautista or whomever. I mean, I just was asking for staff comment on that, please.
Yeah, sure. I, I can start and then Deputy Director Batista, who's been serving as the project manager on this and Public Works Director Peterson are available. In addition, we have Don Merquez from Group Four, who can also answer some of the, the many questions that were raised. So as the council is aware, this has been a, a long process, an iterative process of every step of the way. Deputy Director Bautista could probably name the, the dates of the study sessions and various, various meetings that we've had with the city council in this process to arrive at the final conceptual design decisions by the city council as well as approval of the funding strategy and all the work that we, we put into the, the funding strategy leading up to the civic center funding strategy being included in the recommended budget for next year, which the council will be voting on later on this agenda. So it's, it's been quite a process and I guess we can, we can just respond to all the, all the specific questions and perhaps remind us of what those questions are that you would like us to respond to. And I, if it's easiest, maybe we, if the council thinks they might have questions of Ms. Merquez from Group Four, let's elevate. There she is. And, and Director Peterson could probably also chime in and, but Deputy Director Batista has a lot of information.
Okay, welcome, Ms. Merkus. Nice to see you. Deputy Director Bautista or Director Peterson, would you please, for the, to remind council and for the public, give a brief restatement of the timeline on this project and how it is proceed, how we proceeded with it?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember Sam Bautista, Deputy Director of Public Works and also the project manager on this project. So just going through the timeline. So in November of 2020, that is when the city executed a contract with Group Four to conduct the conceptual design. And so with that, the conceptual design was to, you know, provide options of how to renovate the civic center. And as you know, we've gone through this process of making sure that city council has been involved as well as the community in, in conducting workshops with the, with the community and getting, gain their public input. So so in January of 2021, that was when council had a study session that presented the preliminary conceptual design. And, and at that time, we brought two new preferred building programs as well as the different. the different, um, preferred site alternatives of the civic center. And a, also we brought up the, the, the aesthetic design of the conceptual design. Or the aesthetics of the conceptual design. And then, um, from there in February, um, twenty twenty one. Um, we then did another study session with the council, uh, which, um, provided, um. Which, in which council provided, uh, direction to staff, um, on the preferred scope of work of the civic center. So as, um, as said earlier, we, um, you know, we worked hard with, um. With staff, with, um, with council, brought back all the different, um, uh, design options. And then, uh, and then it all culminated with a final design in April of twenty, uh, in April of twenty twenty one. And at that point, um, we provided you a final conceptual design. Should, you know, uh, with, um, the conceptual, the final conceptual alternative along with, uh, cost options. For the project as well as, uh, the, um, you know, just ask, asking for direction in terms of what the next steps were for this project. And at that, and also at that study session, we, uh, provided to council, um, a preliminary funding strategy. Which would, which was brought forward during the budget process. And, um, and now, um, we are here today to, um, go ahead and, um. Go into, um, the, you know, the, to conceptual or schematic design, because the um, finals design, bringing the conceptual into construction documents. So that's what this phase is, is to, um, start the, um. The true, um, nitty gritty, uh, details so that we can go out to bid and, and, um. And have a new civic center constructed by, um, hope, or start construction by March of twenty twenty two. So that's, that's it in a nutshell.
Okay, and, um, Ms. Marcus, if you could address for us, please, some of the questions regarding the steps that were taken leading up to the conceptual design?
Um, yeah, so actually, I think the first step, um, Sam, correct me if I'm wrong. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Don Merkis, Principal with Group Four. Um, we actually did a feasibility study, which started about a year ago last June. And the feasibility study went over the summer with interactive workshops with council, study sessions with council, working with staff. Um, developing the program and different options, which then went to council, uh, for direction in October of last year. And after those options were considered by council, um, the renovation option was the preferred option to move forward with for the conceptual design. And so that was the second part of the work that we did, started in December and presented final recommendations, I believe, in April. Um, part of that work did also include, um, stakeholder meetings with the neighbors, getting the neighbors' input, bringing them up to speed. And additional, um, many, many staff workshops and study sessions with council. Um, and so that is based then on, uh, our scope of work was the direction that we received from council, um, in April. Um, I do have responses to a lot of the questions the community asked. Should I just move right ahead with that, Mayor?
Um, I hope one of them is going to address the soils and the questions about the studies that theoretically may or may not have been done, or at what point in time they should be done.
Yes, and so, um, I actually have a couple pages of notes here to respond to. Um, so the first one, I believe Ms. Boils was asking about the rehabilitation, rehabilitation of the city hall building. And so the option that council gave us direction for in April and what's included in the budget currently is actually the full rehabilitation of the city hall, which includes the envelope. Uh, exterior envelope, the siding, the roof, the windows, pretty much full rehabilitation with the new circulation core, which is the elevator and the stairs. And so the entire building will be brought up to ADA and brought up to meet current code as well as energy requirements for, uh, Cal Green. Which was also a question Mr. Tam had, is why is lead an option? Well, lead is an option because the current building code, um, has Cal Green, uh, requirement, which is uh, considered pretty much an equivalent of lead certified, but without all the extra documentation cost. And so in our scope of work right now, we have to be Cal Green, which is a building code. And both buildings will be brought up to meet that. But additionally, we will track lead through schematic design and bring that back to council as an option. If you want to pursue lead certification, uh, the documentation during construction, there's a lot of work that goes into getting, uh, that lead criteria, criteria met. And we can bring that cost back to council as an option. One of the other options that you will also have is to aim for net zero building. Uh, part of the current building code means that the building has to be photovoltaic ready. So we'll have to be able to support a PV system that can be either installed, um, with the purchase power agreement. Other options to get PVs are certainly out there. Um, but we would be looking at an all electric building as an option for the council to consider also. So really, at the end of schematic, you'll have different options to choose from in terms of sustainability and which approach you want to take on that. Uh, in regards to geotechnical report, we have already completed a geotechnical report for the sites. And so that included borings and recommendations for structural upgrades for both the paving as well as the buildings. Um, in addition to that, other reports, it has Matt report has also been completed for both buildings. Uh, to complement the other studies that the city had already done. And we will be using that and doing hazmat remediation as part of the demolition of the project. Uh, the rail car. So one of the really exciting things about the project, the designers think, um, is incorporation of the rail car. If you recall, at the last council meeting, uh, three options were presented for the location of the rail car. And it was said that you do not need to make a decision on that now. And what staff has worked with the design team to do is actually include during the schematic design phase. The design of the Salata Lot with the civic center site. And so we don't have the money to move ahead with that renovation, but we will be able to look at cohesively both the Salata Lot and the Civic Center Lot with our landscape architect and come back to council and the public, if you choose to engage on which option you would like to move ahead with cohesive design, even though you may not have the funding for both initially. You would have the design for it. So when funding becomes available, you could pursue that. And then the last thing I had on my list, but happy to cover anything else is the purchasing of the furniture. Um, the furniture that's being purchased is modular office furniture. And the beauty of the renovation of the P and P building and the city hall building is that we're designing them to kind of current design standards for office spaces so that they're gonna support flexible furniture being reconfiguration. Um, if you need to add staff, moving furniture, moving things, adding chairs, adding workstations. And the furniture that is being purchased is also modular. And so the beauty of this modular furniture is that you can also use it in the interim, uh, location at the community center. And it can be easily reconfigured and brought over to the new facility or the P and P building in the city hall once renovation is completed. And the colors that are being selected right now are very neutral. And those can then be complemented with the carpet and other accent colors and other furniture pieces that you'll need to purchase to fill out the building. And
I think those are all the questions that are at top of mind for me, council members, or were there other questions that you were either brought to your own, you had in your mind, or were brought up during public comment that you would like to ask about? And Director Peterson, welcome. And it's nice to see you. Did you have anything you wanted to add in regard to the process that we've been pursuing for this project?
Thank you, Lisa Peterson, Director of Public Works, and good evening, council members. I, you know, I think the process both, um, Sam and Dawn have done a great job explaining the very extensive process that we have gone through to get to this point. So it has not been, um, you know, it ha, it has, I think, been very robust and the work that we've done to get to this point. I think, um, you know, uh, Dawn has done a great job responding to the questions, uh, that came up from the public. I, I think Group Four has done an amazing job really thinking through all of these questions and all of these, these issues that would be coming up during the course of the process. One of the, the things that it is important to keep in mind is, um, you know, the, the, the process did stall a little bit while we were waiting to see what was going on with the budget. So, um, you know, now that the budget is up for consideration and adoption, it does give us a chance to finally get moving on the project. Um, any type of, of delay, of course, would, you know, delay the, the design and then ultimately delay the move. So just something to keep in mind as, as we're moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, council members, if there is nothing further on this item, then I would entertain a motion regarding, um, consent item six. And if no one's gonna make a motion, then I will make a motion. Okay, I'm going to move that we approve consent item six and, um, move forward. No second?
Your has his hand up.
I can't, go ahead, please.
Um, I'll second, and before we vote, I just wanted to make the comment, um, to Mr. Hutchinson's point. That, um, as council people, we do in fact have access to documentation on request that, um. Unfortunately, the public doesn't always have access to for legal reasons. Speaking for myself, I have every confidence in our, um, city manager's determination at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number six, I have a motion by Mayor Beckmeyer with a second by Councilmember Big Stick. I'll call the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatalas.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
No.
Mayor Proton Beer.
Um, I'm gonna vote yes, but I just wanted to say thank you to Dawn for answering all of those questions, because I think that's what I was missing in my brain when I brought up what I did. So I am voting yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And the motion to approve item number six passes with a vote of four in favor, one opposed.
Very well. I think that does bring us to the end of our consent agenda. And I'm wondering if we should, at this juncture, which is a little unusual. Do we wish to go into oral communications or would we like to have a brief break? Five minute?
I would like a break, please.
Five?
Yeah.
We will take five minutes. It is, uh, eight forty. We'll return at eight forty five. Thank you. Oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by me, the mayor, during oral communications. Provided, however, that during oral communications, only items not on the agenda for tonight's meeting may be addressed. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. Council members will not into, enter into debate with speakers under oral communication. A maximum of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker. Uh, I request that we have appropriate conduct and if we have difficulty in our conduct. Then I will stop. The public comment and the individual will be ordered barred from further audience before tonight, the council tonight during the meeting. On that note. I don't know if Mr. Montemeyer, you'll be doing our public comment tonight?
We have one hand raised, Madam Mayor, from Remy Tan. Remy, you may go ahead and unmute yourself.
Please go ahead.
Hi, thank, thank you, uh, Honorable City Council, and this is Remy Tan again, uh, Pacific Manor. Um, I'd like to commend the, the council on, um, you know, the selection of these consultants that we heard, uh, both the city hall as well as the, uh, uh, waterfront, uh, Beach Boulevard. Um, I'm glad to see, uh, you guys are, you know, using really high quality consultants and are really happy about the answers that the consultants gave in, in previous meetings. Um, but I'm actually concerned because, uh, the numbers on, uh, these large projects as well as some other ones in the city. Uh, seem to be, uh, you know, tipping towards over budget. And I'd like to make a suggestion that the, uh, moving forward, that the council considers a integrated project delivery or design build. Uh, with, uh, target value delivery, uh, so that, um, as the projects come out of their schematic design. Um, you know, the, uh, consultants can design this to a budget and, and the, uh, general contractor will be already on board to give real world numbers, um, on the cost of these projects. And, um, SFO has done this, uh, with Terminal Two, Terminal Three and Terminal One, uh, to keep those projects on budget and ahead of schedule, in fact. Um, having learned the lesson from, uh, the disastrous International Terminal, which, you know, was a beautiful terminal, but you know, started with a three hundred million dollar budget and went, um, over budget to six hundred and sixty million dollars. So it's a factor of two plus, um, resulting in, um, a lot of black guys around, all around. Um, I understand the, uh, lead architectural consultant, uh, Skidmore Owens and Merrill and the, uh, lead, um, general contractor, uh, Tudor Saliba. Has been, uh, effectively banned from airport work, uh, because of the cost overruns. And, uh, many of the managers involved in the airport, um, were, were terminated after that job. But the subsequent jobs on Terminal Two, uh, Terminal Three and Terminal One, uh, were much more successful under the design build integrated project delivery model. And the contractor, design team worked very close together, uh, with the airport stakeholders, which resulted in projects that, um. Have a much better in terms of, uh, revenue for the airport as well as, um. Um, bringing, bringing, um, you know, under budget and, um, meeting the project schedule. So again, uh, encourage the city council to use integrated project delivery design bill on future projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm seeing one additional hand raised from Anita Reese. Um, Anita, you may not mute yourself.
Hello, Anita Reese with the Pacifica Resource Center. I want to thank the city council and city staff for your ongoing support now and throughout the years. Uh, our office remains open on Mondays, Tuesdays and Thursdays, nine to five, and Wednesdays, nine to seven. We're closed for lunch between twelve thirty and one thirty, and Fridays we're open from nine to one. We are available for in-person appointments, but continue to encourage folks to have phone or remote appointments whenever We are available for in-person appointments, but continue to encourage folks to have phone or remote appointments whenever possible. Our grocery program continues weekly at the American Legion Hall at 555 Buell on Wednesdays. If you or someone you know needs groceries, please contact PRC to sign up for an appointment to pick up groceries at our grocery drive-through. Otherwise, please go to the American Legion after 3:30 and we'll get you through the line as quickly as possible. PRC continues to help folks who are unable to pay their mortgage or rent. To maximize support for renters who are behind on their rent due to COVID, we are encouraging folks to apply for the state and federal funds administered at housingiskey.com. Folks applying for this funding can now get 100% of past due rent paid, that's owed from April 2020 through June of 2021. This support, along with the extension that's expected of the eviction moratorium, it passed both houses and is now going to the governor's desk for signature, will lead to an eviction moratorium through September 30th of 2020 and will help prevent homelessness for Pacificans behind on their rent due to, due to the pandemic. Until that happens, or wait, sorry, this is before I found out that this was, had been extended or likely to be extended, we are still focusing on paying July rent until it's finally signed. If you need help applying or need additional information, please contact PRC. We're also continuing our unhoused on the coast outreach work. Please continue to contact our UC Outreach staff by email at ucutreach@pacresourcecenter.org or by calling outreach specialist Daniel Gardner at 650-575-4861 or Marlon Morales at 650-387-4458. If you know or see someone who's living on the streets in an encampment or in a vehicle. And I'm happy to report that we've gotten several of our unhoused Pacificans into the Coastside Shelter in Half Moon Bay, including two folks who were living previously in their motorhomes. And we are enrolling families with students in pre-K through 12th grade in our back-to-school program now. Distribution is tentatively scheduled for August 7th. We're accepting donations of backpacks for now and we'll expand the list in the next week or so. So check our website for updates or please call PRC for more information. We can be reached at 650-738-7470 or by email at info@pacresourcecenter.org or at our website at pacresourcecenter.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I am not seeing any more hands raised at this time.
All right, then I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to council.
Actually, we just had a hand raised by Karen Amayo.
I will be reopening a public comment for Carolyn Hermio. Please go ahead.
Carolyn, you may now unmute yourself.
Thank you. It was a little confusion about when to click on. I wish, my name is Carolyn Hermio. And this evening I want to thank the council for the past action that you took, passing the resolution that asked the county and the state to extend the eviction moratorium. And it seems that the state legislature has extended that moratorium to cover September, to the end of September. However, we realize that people still have not had enough time to recover from loss, financial loss during COVID and they will need longer than September. So I would urge the city council leaders to think about passing a moratorium similar to the one passed by Mountain Dew. Only make it longer, go until the end of the year. Our tenants need to be protected. And this is one very important way to do that, to extend that moratorium so that they do not have to worry about evictions until they are able to get back on their feet. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Mr. Montemayor?
I am not seeing any more hands raised at this time. Oh, we have a hand raised, so Gloria Stofan. And I just noticed a call-in listener as well. If you are calling in and would like to speak, please press start. Gloria, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, city council members and city staff. My name's Gloria Stofan and I'm a Pacifica homeowner since 1966. I just want to take this time to thank the city in placing the announcement of California COVID-19 Rent Relief Fund in the city's Connect with Pacifica, also sending a letter at the last city council members' meeting. Just so the city knows, St. Peter's Faith in Action Bay Area and Pacifica Housing Parole are making calls to renters so that they know that there is rent relief funding due to COVID. What is interesting is that some of those renters didn't know that there was even a rental relief fund. Also, some renters are having difficulty accessing the application online and even some don't have a computer to get online. The state, I guess, has extended it, but I haven't heard of announcement yet. But I'm urging the city council to extend the moratorium, just as Carol, Carolyn, the speaker before me, asked and requested. I really want the city council to extend the moratorium for Pacifica residents and to have it extended to the end of the year. A stable home makes for a healthy and strong community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gloria. We have a call-in listener ending in 1606. You are now muted. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Sue DeGruer again. Yeah, as the speakers just mentioned, the, a lot of people don't even know the things that are available for them, for the renters and even the landlords. For example, of one thing, I just have a hard time getting over the fact that we need to be able to find some way to reach all of our residents. And so it looks like the federal and the state and even the county seems to have money. And if I remember correctly, they're even offering the cities the opportunity to request funds to be able to outreach to their own public residents. So I just think whatever we can get to help people, and it's evident that, as mentioned again, that even for things where money is available for people, whether they're renters or the landlords, what was it, 80% of that money was not spent? So that's another verification that we need to be able to reach all of our residents for whatever the issue. Because everybody, we're in this together and it really concerns me that a lot of people just aren't digital. And many who are digital just can't do all this digital stuff after a full day's work on the digital. So I just hate to think of all of our residents that don't have a clue of what's going on. And to blame them is just not the right way to go. See if there's money available during this time when money seems to be floating around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm not seeing any more hands raised at this time.
All right, I will close public comment, bring it back to council for council communications. Who would like to start? Councilmember Big Stick, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Yesterday I got to attend, I, I've been out of town for the last couple of weeks, so I haven't had much opportunity to eat. But yesterday I wound up at an event at Sangha Hot Yoga at West Manor Drive. And they're a relatively new hot yoga studio in town and was delighted to be able to enjoy sharing in their space as they were allowing really a couple nonprofits to have an event there. And the, the chief organization was called Vibes and Smiles. Apparently, they just kind of support a lot of nonprofits in the area. But in this case, very specifically, they've been putting together and are trying to hit a, a number of 10,000 safety packets for the AAPI community to keep them from being assaulted. And so there'll be like safety whistles and pepper gel in the packs and flashlights. They've hit 5,000 out of 10,000 and were doing an event in our town yesterday to bring the spotlight. So that was appreciated. They also shone the light on this organization, Maven Youth, who are a national nonprofit building LGBTQ+ youth tech advocates. And there were some vendors there also and all proceeds, or 10% of the proceeds went to support Maven. And so it was a big spotlight shined on both our businesses in town as well as local nonprofits. So that was a joy to attend that with our mayor and Sue Vaterlaus. And I hear that Mayor Protem had been there shortly before we had been. I attended emergency preparedness on Wednesday, the 16th. There was a presentation on North Coast County Water District, which was fascinating. And it all related to emergencies and what worst-case scenarios are if our primary sources of water weren't instantly available. And so it was actually very reassuring. I brought up the question because a lot of their, their inner workings now are computer-based. And I, because of the various national news, I was wondering about security protocols. And just as of like a month and a half ago, they got a SCADA protocol put in place with dual access lines. And so they're, they're pretty well protected on the digital front. And it was good to hear how they get us water. I attended PCE last Thursday, a lot about Senate Bill Number 612, which was going to be heard and is apparently, we're not sure whether or not it's going to be heard. PCE sent an email out today asking for people to call in to say, please put this on the Senate agenda so that it can pass. I don't have a phone number directly in front of me for the Senate head of that committee. But Senate Bill 612, if anyone's inclined to do that homework and call in, in the energy world, it would do us a big favor to have SB 612 heard. It's been passing through every committee up until now. And it would be a real shame if that were stalled at this point for reasons unknown to me. And the next PCE meeting will be the 22nd of July. And aside from that, I attended Council of Cities, again with many of my co-counselors here. There was a wonderful presentation about the Burlingame Post Office, which was a great case in point of how public-private partnerships can work out quite nicely. And it, it brought a little optimism to the idea to me until I heard the timeline that they got to go through. And so later on, I'll probably bring that up again because timeline factors into PPPs, PPPs quite substantially apparently. But it was really good to see that their project worked out and to learn a little bit more on the subject. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And I am looking to find out who would like to go next. Councilmember Vaterlaus, please go ahead.
Hey, I attended the county opening, No Mask Day on June the 15th. And the highlight of my day was that Mary Beer and I got to actually hug each other that day. And it was really quite wonderful. I attended the San Mateo County Office of Emergency Services. Please, everyone, please sign up for the SMC Alert. And now the Zone Haven app, it's on our Connect with Pacifica. And if you'll go in there and find out what district you're in, it can help if we have fires or even accidents. They used it in South City and it worked great because they could direct people away from the fire scene. Also, they did, the county owns many drones now, which really can help with fire and also water rescue issues. I think I said this before, but they can drop a life jacket down to someone who is in the ocean, which will not only save them, but also be a better indicator of where they're located. And someone in the county invented that with the life jacket ability. It's pretty incredible. I went to the Recovery Coordination Council. We are going to continue that because we have various issues that we need to continue with. The Great Plates Program for Seniors is going to continue through the end of July. But after that, they find that there are a lot of homebound seniors that don't have access to food. So they're going to do a county food program, whether they deliver groceries once a week or meals on wheels. But they are going to continue with that for people who are already signed up. I went to the Democrats where they spoke on immigration. I went to the Peninsula League of Cities and we had Mullin, Berman and Becker. And we did breakout groups. My main goal was to make sure that they realized that sea level rise is also on the coast. My usual thing that I tell people because they, they often just talk about the Bayside, but I have to bring that up every time. And Kevin Mullin did bring up AB 467, which is similar to our old redevelopment agencies. And they were trying to get that going. And that would be a great thing for the cities. I also went to Burlingame Council of Cities. I went to Vibes and Smiles. And I would like to thank Public Works because I had various items from the public. A curb cut item, a hole in a sidewalk that's been there for six months. And, and also, sorry, I had a couple of things. Oh, speeding on Roberts Road and Public Works instantly got on all of those items. And I'd just like to thank them for being proactive. The hole in the sidewalk's already being fixed and it was there for, and it, it's a, it's a company outside of Pacifica that did it. And so they are fixing it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Neil?
I also was out of town several days this week. So I went to one meeting, congestion management, and I wanted to be sure Sue Vaterlaus, who goes to C-CAG, is aware of the land use plan that was discussed at my meeting. And there is absolutely nothing in congestion management plan, land use that involves the coast, either Half Moon Bay, Pescadero, Montero or Pacifica. Because they're talking about registering with commute.org and commute.org has no representation or services here on the entire coast. So, and it's also regarding stuff that has to be a half mile from a train track, et cetera. So I just want you to be sure when you vote on that to make those comments to the other board members. That's it.
Thanks, Mr. O'Neil. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on the Peninsula Clean Energy SB 612. I have the phone number here. If you'd like to call Assemblyman Holden's office today, you can call 916-319-2041. And thank you, Kevin Woodhouse, for sending that out. I appreciate that. I also got to go to Sangha Yoga yesterday. It was really lovely and happy. And I just wanted to make a comment about how important they have been throughout this pandemic, how they have carefully taken care of our community. And I really appreciate that a lot. I also attended the Pacifica Historical Society's unveiling of the working model of the Ocean Shore Railroad. The Seaside Singers were there and you guys have to go see the model. It works. This train goes all the way around. You can see all the different sections of Pacifica. I felt like it was really important for me to see it in person instead of just like hear about it. So I, please go and see that. It's just awesome. So thank you to the Historical Society. I went to the Social Unity Project fundraiser. The Social Unity's mission is to work towards eradication of racism through education and involvement in the community. So thank you to Breakers for hosting their fundraiser. It was really wonderful to hear about all of the work that they're doing, all the important work that they're doing in our community, including book readings with the community and with our Pacifica Police Department. So thank you so much for all that work. I attended the Open Space Meeting and so we're going to be looking forward to hearing a report on their findings and recommendations to council on July 12th. I attended Council of Cities with all my colleagues. I attended the reopening as Councilmember Vaterlaus said. So yeah, it was awesome to see all the people there, so happy and to hug you, Sue. Thank you for that. And then I met with Urban Habitat and some other local electives from our region. And then I met with Urban Habitat and some other local electives from our region and heard from Daniel Saber, who is the Assistant Director of Housing and Planning for the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. He spoke to us about the newly funded A BAG Committee, which is the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, and the strategies that they're going to be putting forth to support production of housing, preservation of housing and protection of tenants. And so that was really enlightening and I can have more information, but I'm going to stop there and hand it over to you, Mayor Beckmeyer.
Thank you very much. All right, there were a number of meetings that I attended as well as my colleagues, such as the Democrats meeting and the fundraiser yesterday at Sangha. Is that how you say it? Hot Yoga? It was really fun. And it was really exciting to see the community gathering and kind of spilling out of the doorway, you know, onto the street. It was just lively and and great to welcome a new business to town. So that was great. Mayor Protem Beer and I met with some important, on an important issue with some neighbors in Rockaway yesterday. Was that yesterday? Yeah, yesterday afternoon. And there will be more questions forthcoming for Deputy Director Bautista and Director Peterson. I'm thinking it might warrant a meeting just to get caught up. And I attended A BAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments meeting on Friday. That was quite all morning until one o'clock or maybe two o'clock almost. Because there was a general session from nine to ten thirty. And then I think the session they hoped would be relatively quick ended up being a little bit longer than expected, due in part to public comment from, it started out, there were six hands raised and all six of them were from San Mateo County. And we're talking about a meeting that covers all nine Bay Area counties and over a hundred cities. So I found that interesting. And the chief area of concern that was being brought up and I think possibly overlapping simultaneously, Councilmember Vaterlaus with the meeting with the Peninsula Division, the same issue was being brought up and it had a lot to do with Rena. And it had, in this case, it had something to do with Senate Bill nine and the impact of those two realities for, you know, the need for housing and it's all about housing. But how do we integrate that into our existing process? And and with the extremely larger Rena number, it's going to be a challenge for sure. So I'm glad that we're working on it. I had occasion to have a bit of a conversation today with Assistant City Manager Wermeyerster on some issues around that in terms of potential zoning and how that affects our Rena numbers. So I just want the public to know that this is on the front of the mind of all five council members all the time. Whether we talk about it all the time or not, whether there's a council agenda item about it all the time or not, it's constantly something that we're addressing. So be aware of that. There's some potentially very, very positive news coming for Pacifica from the state budget. And I don't think it's a really good idea to talk about a lot of detail until we know it's a sure done thing. But there were some comments made tonight about the pier and concerns about the pier. And I feel that it'll be important to stay tuned for that, to hear more as the days unfold with the final budget approval. Deliberations are still going on last time we checked, so I don't know where it stands right now. I tried to Google it really fast, but I didn't see any answer. So I'm just going to leave it there and encourage you to tune in on the twelfth of July, if not before, to hear where things stand. I think that's really all that I wanted to share, other than to say to my fellow council members and to city staff and pretty much to everyone listening. I just came off of four days of vacation, which was planned long ago in celebration of my thirtieth wedding anniversary. And I am really urging everyone to please take time to just take some time. I think the feeling is, oh, my God, we've been locked up in our house. We've been taking time. And recreation, as we were saying earlier tonight, is health. You know, change of scene for us was amazing. I rode a bike. Hello? That's just, forget it. I mean, that's just like practically a miracle. So, you know, just getting out of the box that I've been in and literally this box that I've been in for months. I just want to say, I think it's really important that as much work as we have to do, we need to take care of ourselves. Because if we fall apart, we can't do the work. And so I'm a vote for recreation and leisure and taking a break. So if that means a delay in getting back to you, your questions will be answered, I promise. It may not happen right as fast as you hope it will, either from city staff or from us. But it's not that we're not caring. It's that we're trying to keep ourselves healthy and moving forward so we can do the best job that we can for you. And that's all I'm going to say on that and turn it over to our city manager, Kevin Woodhouse.
Thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer and Mayor Protem Beer and council members. Surprisingly, I don't have many communications, city manager communications tonight as I've been really focused on the agenda for tonight and the numerous items that are on here and not the least of which is getting the final budget before you tonight. So so that's been a heavy lift. In addition to other personnel issues and labor negotiations and new mask guidelines for the organization and other aspects of, I guess, the normal work that I do, also related to communications with our state legislators about bills and budget that may affect Pacifica, as the mayor just mentioned. So it's been a really busy June and really excited to wrap up the fiscal year and talk about the budget later today, later tonight, sorry. And 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 then take a little bit of vacation, as the mayor was also saying. So thanks very much.
You are on mute, Sue.
Thank you very much. We're moving on to consideration. We have before us council members one, two, three, four, five items. It is nine eighteen PM. I'm going to try very hard to keep this moving and feel free to poke me, you know, literally, or just say, hey, do you think it's time to call the question if we get to that point? Because I really, you know, as much as I want to be as inclusive as possible and I'm constantly trying to make sure we're covering everyone's questions, sometimes we've covered it and it's time to move on to the next item. So please help me stay on track and please, especially as we approach the witching hour where we have to, you know, ask for more time and vote on it, please keep me apprised of that because I'm going to lose track. All right, I have a super long, multi paragraph item number eight, which is introduction of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pacifica repealing section four dash seven, dot one 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 four of Article eleven, stopping, standing and parking of Chapter seven traffic within Title four of the Pacifica Municipal Code and amending Article twelve of Chapter seven traffic within Title four of the Pacifica Municipal Code related to the regulation of parking and consideration of a resolution approving updated lists of public streets where oversized vehicle parking is prohibited and dismissing any citation issued under the oversized vehicle ordinance for streets not included on Resolution ten dash twenty twenty and refunding fines paid for those citations. So the proposed action is to move to waive the first reading of everything I just said. And there is a second item, move to adopt the resolution approving the updated list of public streets, as I just stated. We will turn to City Manager Woodhouse and I'm assuming Director Peterson. I don't have it in front of me. Or is it going to be City Attorney?
Meta Mayor, yes, thank you. So my office and Leah Castella of my office had a large part in preparing the staff report. And so Leah Castella, who has just shown up on video, will be giving the staff report. Leah, welcome.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Sure can. Thank you. Thank you, Leah.
You're welcome. So you all have a detailed staff report in your agenda packet. So I don't want to spend a lot of time reiterating what's in there, but I do want to go through the highlights of what is being proposed tonight. So the first is revisions to the oversized vehicle ordinance. And there are functionally three revisions that are under consideration. And these revisions are not meant to change the ordinance, but are instead meant to improve the oversized vehicle ordinance and confirm and ensure that the that the text of the ordinance is consistent with our implementation. So the first thing that we are doing to it is a removing language that gives the traffic engineer discretion to erect signs banning parking based on aesthetics and views. That is a provision that has not been used to develop the list of prohibited streets. And so, again, to make it consistent with our current implementation, the proposal is to remove it. The second is to add language to make clear that the traffic engineer can decide that streets that are less than forty feet are safe for oversized vehicles. This is primarily to address one-way streets that may not be forty feet in width, but are, from the traffic engineer's perspective, safe for oversized vehicle parking. And then the final resolution or the final component of the proposed amendment is to clarify that any changes to the list of prohibited streets for oversized vehicle parking must be done by resolution of the city council as we are considering one of, and that is one of the items in consideration tonight. So that's the amendments to the oversized vehicle ordinance. The second item is repeal of the ban on sleeping in your car, which is also currently codified in our municipal code. The reason for that is because of a Supreme Court decision, Martin versus Boise, that was decided in April two thousand nine, which held that criminalizing homelessness was unconstitutional. The case is binding law in the Ninth Circuit where we are located. And and it's so since that time, we don't enforce the ordinance any longer and therefore we are proposing repealing it. The final item.
I'm sorry, Leah, just one correction. I think the date was two thousand and nineteen, not two thousand.
Did I say two thousand nine?
Yes.
My apologies, two thousand and nineteen. That's a big difference. Yes, two thousand and nineteen was when the decision was, came down. And then the last item is revisions to the resolution listing the prohibited streets. And to provide a little more detail on that item, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan Marquez, who has a brief PowerPoint to just go through the changes in that resolution from the original resolution that was enacted about a year ago.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Ryan Marquez, Engineering Division, as Assistant City Attorney Leah Castella pointed out, I just wanted to briefly go over the three main traffic safety concerns that kind of led to this ordinance. I briefly discuss how the roads in Pacifica were analyzed under this ordinance and then list out the roads that are being proposed to be added to the no OSV parking list and the roads being proposed to be removed from that list as well. Next slide, please. So just a brief reminder of what engineering essentially found that led to this ordinance being passed. There's essentially three main traffic safety impacts that engineering found. And those were that OSVs can present traveling constrictions on narrow roads and on curves. OSVs can overhang onto bicycle facilities or bicycle lanes. And that OSVs can cause sight distance issues near uncontrolled intersections. So those first two are really that the oversized vehicle, the increased width compared to regular vehicles presents a kind of a object in the road for either motorists or bicyclists that cause them to veer off their normal path and can cause traffic safety impacts. And the the last of the three, the sight distance issue is essentially if a large vehicle is parked on a corner, it may block the view of a car trying to get onto that road if it's uncontrolled. The motorists trying to enter the road would not be able to see adequate distance in order to make the the correct decision needed to make the maneuver onto the uncontrolled intersection. Next slide, please. So just a reminder of how we analyzed the roads under this ordinance. We did review the entire database for the city of Pacifica. That's five hundred and eighty-nine sections of road or ninety center lane miles of road. Some of the road characteristics that we checked, we confirmed road with using Google Earth, our database and QA QACing and field. We reviewed the parking on these segments. So is there parking on one side? Is there parking on both sides? Is it diagonal? So these are all considerations that that we took when doing our analysis. We also looked, did the road have a varying width? So was there one section that is necessarily wider than the other? We looked if the road was one-way, two-way, or if there was a number of travel lanes that that essentially we need to take into consideration our analysis. The overall finding was that OSV parking was not suitable on roads where, on bus routes where the travel lane would be restricted to less than twelve feet and on non-bus route roads where the travel lane would be restricted to less than ten feet. And then, of course, where OSVs may impact bicycle facilities on roads. So the findings of the original ordinance and resolution were that five hundred and forty-seven out of five hundred and eighty-nine road segments were found to be not suitable for oversized parking based on these criteria. Next slide, please. Since that original ordinance and resolution, this evening, proposing to update that list by adding on these three sections of road, Terranova Boulevard from Oddstead to Victoria, Oddstead Way from Terranova to the end of the road, Palmetto Avenue from Monterey Road to four hundred and sixty feet south of Westline Road. Next slide, please. And we are also proposing to remove the following segments from the no OSV parking list, thus making OSVs allowed to be parking on these segments of road. Those are Esplanade Avenue from Manor Drive to Bill Drake Way and Malaga Drive from Oceana to Avalon. The details of these, of all these roads are listed in the staff report. However, at this time, we're happy to take questions on the staff report and any particulars.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marquez. And I'm looking for any hands or questions from council members? Any clarifications needed? Not seeing any. All right. With that, that concludes the presentation for this item. Is that correct, Mr. Marquez?
Correct.
All right, then we need to go to a public comment. And would that be Mr. Montemeyer?
Yes, I see three hands raised, Meta Mayor. Our first speaker is Carolyn Harameo. You are now needed. Good for you to speak.
Yes, thank you. My name is Carolyn Harameo. And I wanted to say that this resolution does not do enough to right the wrongs created by the oversized vehicle ordinance. People need a clear list and map that indicates where parking RVs is allowed. This list and map need to be easily accessible. And all citations issued during this time of confusion need to be dismissed and all fines refunded. And of course, what we really need is a safe parking program. And of course, what we really need is a safe parking program. One that has been suggested several times under the supervision of the Resource Center. The county has said that money is available for these types of programs, but the city has to take the lead. So we're asking that our city council members take the lead and see what they can do to create a safe parking program here in Pacifica. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carolyn, our next speaker is Monica Meeker, followed by Remy Tan. Monica, you're now muted. Feel free to start speaking.
Thank you, Pacifica City Council. And thank you for hearing me tonight. I'm calling to strongly urge you to keep Esplanade Avenue from Manor to Bill Drake Way as part of the oversized vehicle ordinance and remove it from tonight's motion. I'm a resident of Dolphin Drive and frequently take walks with my family, which includes two small children under five along Esplanade Avenue. Since the OSV ordinance was enacted, along Esplanade, our walks have become much more pleasant. Previously, we had to avoid that area because there are strong smells of urine. There are piles of trash and there are aggressive dogs in the camper. I personally purchased a trash picker and a bucket to take on walks to clean up trash in hopes that temporary users of the area would take note and be more responsible. But no matter how much I tried to keep the area clean, there was still more trash the next day. To be clear, I don't believe that all this trash came from the people in the RVs. I think part of it is that the RVs created a wall that blocked the bluffs from the streets, which meant people just passing through were more comfortable doing nefarious things behind the RV, such as urinating or throwing trash on the ground. As a reminder, there's no filter between the bluffs and the ocean. So any trash on Esplanade, it's going to end up in the ocean, which adds to a huge pollution problem. And, you know, I defer to Pacific Beach Coalition to give much more information about that matter. Uh, I don't think I need to reiterate, you know, human waste and trash pose a health and safety risk to the residents in this area and makes it impossible for us to enjoy our neighborhood. Many recent policies have made residents of North Pacifica, including those in in this neighborhood, feel like we're unimportant to the city. Or that these actions are being taken directly against us. And the removal of the OSV ordinance on this section of Esplanade feels like another such example. I know there are many comments from our neighborhood emailed in, so please take those in consideration as well. The the reason cited for removing this section is because the bike lane was not maintained. I feel like the inability to maintain the bike lane is is not a viable reason to burden the taxpaying residents with health and safety issues that were present before the OSV ordinance. You know, removing the OSV ordinance along these two blocks will not help with the unhoused populations. The city needs a more comprehensive solution. And so I I ask that you remove that you keep Esplanade Avenue from Manor to Bill Drake Way as part of the oversized vehicle ordinance and remove it from tonight's motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Monica, our next speaker is Remy Tan, followed by Suzanne Moore. Remy, you're now muted.
Hi, Remy Tan, Pacific Manor. This this ordinance is is pretty important because it, you know, and I'm I'm happy that the the city staff really studied the safety issues. Because there are a number of intersections I know is pulling out is very difficult. So I'm glad that's been worked out. But I think it, you know, it does need to be signed very clearly where you can or cannot park the RVs and oversized vehicles. So there's no confusion and that's, you know, only fair to the, you know, people who use the RVs and and oversized vehicles. The the other thing is with the homeless crisis, the lack of affordable housing and how most peninsula cities, Pacifica included, have not meet their arena. I think, you know, you know, as a society, we should allow people to park the their RVs so long as they're not in front of somebody's house. You know, obstructing driveways or, you know, sightlines from driveways or in front of anybody's businesses. And we have a lot of, you know, streets that that are, you know, fronting open space or and, you know, fronting sides of businesses that, you know, we could, you know, open up for safe RV parking. But I think for anybody using these RVs overnight, they need to have a facility that they can dump the onboard sewage properly, you know, and proper waste disposal. So it doesn't go directly to the to the ocean. So I think the city needs to talk to like the San Francisco RV Park and allow, you know, dump fees, you know, for a fee for these RVs and also perhaps to deal with the garbage problem, the city should put some bins out there and maybe if somebody parks an RV, charge a very small nominal fee to cover the cost of the trash collection. So I think that would address the other speakers' concern about the trash in the earth. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Our next speaker is Suzanne Moore, followed by Peter Lo. Suzanne, you're now muted.
Thank you, Suzanne Moore. I'm glad that Pacifica, like other cities, has agreed to repeal the provision prohibiting human habitation in vehicles. However, city staff and council are missing an opportunity to bring clarity to this ordinance. The community would really benefit from a list which delineates all the legal parking areas for oversized vehicles. There's no evidence that this list would create a destination or be a magnet and attract others to Pacifica. In fact, two well-established safe parking programs, New Beginnings Program in Santa Barbara and Project We Hope in East Palo Alto, they denied that there was any influx of influx of vehicles from outside their communities. There is no doubt, however, that homelessness and housing instability has increased in the pandemic and that every community should do what it can to prevent homelessness and provide stepping stones to permanent housing. The current parking list attached to this ordinance remains confusing. Create and post a list of legal parking. When this is posted, refund all past parking tickets which preceded it. Rectify the discrepancies between the list and street signage and quickly work with our county to create a safe parking program in Pacifica. Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzanne, our last speaker is Peter Lo. Peter, you're now muted.
Hello, Peter Loeb. I I'm wondering if the council members watched the hearing that the judge held on the ACLU lawsuit. One of the side benefits of the pandemic, if I can call it that, is that we can now, for the least for the time being, we can, we can see a court hearing without even leaving our living room. We don't have to go down to the federal building and park and all that stuff. But I was what I saw right away, the the judge in that hearing started out by saying that Pacifica had done a bad job of explaining where you could legally park an oversized vehicle. And he he was clearly asking that there be a list of where you could park. And and the 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 amendments to the ordinance tonight are 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 bending over backwards to not do that. It's all phrased in terms of where you can't park. And and other speakers have said it. I'll just repeat briefly that what's needed is the list of where you can park an oversized vehicle legally. It's it's confusing. It's it's difficult to figure that out right now. Eventually, people, there will be a list whether you whether the city of Pacifica wants it or not. Because people will figure out where they can legally park. The other thing I want to say is that that this the solution to this problem, the RV problem, is is in front of you all the time. If if the city council would support, would would state their support for at least the idea of a safe parking program, then the county will assist in 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 finding ways to do that. Funding, location, whatever, but but the problem cannot be worked on if if the city council won't say we want to see if this can be done. If 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 you, as the city council, would would please just say that you're interested in trying to develop a safe parking program in Pacifica, that then a lot of help will come to bear to to bring that about. And that will go a long way to address the RV problem that this ordinance and the and the hearing and everything are trying to fix. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. I have one more hand raised from Gloria Stofan. Gloria, you're now muted. You may you may not speak.
This is Gloria Stofan, and there just seems to be so much confusion and it's it's very difficult to to go through what everyone has said before me and concerns with the resident that was really very concerned about the trash and what was left after several RVs left. I can empathize with her, but at the same time, the safe parking issue can really address those or alleviate these problems if if there was some way of bringing that to some solution. To get back to the confusion of where the motorhomes can park, that it was, that's what's so confusing. They don't know really where they can park. And then where can this list and the mapping be found? Will it be found at City Hall when it opens? Or at the police station? Also, refund the tickets that were passed out to those that got ticketed thinking they were okay to park in that particular area. My big thing is continue to work with the county, but as the lead. They're looking for the city to take the lead on this and to provide some type of safe parking for those who really need help and assistance. And also, always, always work with the Pacifica Resource Center. They're a wonderful ally and someone that is there to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good Gloria. We have another hand raised from Shelby Jaquez. Shelby, you're now muted.
Hey, everybody. Thank you so much for staying late. I'm here tonight specifically for this issue. I too am a resident of Esplanade Avenue. And like my neighbor Monica, who mentioned the safety issue that we've had here on Esplanade, one thing I wanted to piggyback with in regards to Ryan Marquez's findings is here on Esplanade Avenue, we have a huge sandstorm issue. And sandstorms blow in and gigantic mounds of sand built in our sidewalks. And the oversized vehicles trapped that sand. And so pedestrians and cyclists, yes, the street might be wide, but we cannot walk or ride our bike near where those oversized vehicles park because, like I said, their tires are large, the sand gets trapped, and literally mounds of sand form on the side of the street. So now with the oversized vehicles gone, the sand has the ability to blow and pass through with a bit more simplicity. And so it really is a public safety hazard. If you take the OBSs and put them back on the street, then you've pushed the cyclists and the pedestrians further into the center of the street. So even though they did all this research in regards to the cyclists and the width of the street, et cetera, I don't think you took into consideration the environmental impact that the sand has on the tires of the people riding bicycles on the street. And then the other thing about Esplanade Avenue and why it should be taken into consideration for us to be off this list is because we live in a very fragile part of Pacifica. This cliff is eroding. We all know this. And to have vehicles that are oversized parked on the fragile cliff, it puts us at risk in a different way as well. So it's just two other considerations to piggyback on what my neighbor Monica already spoke about. So please do consider that Esplanade Avenue is unique for its environmental purposes as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby. Madam Mayor, I'm not seeing any more hands raised at this time.
All right, then I'll close public comment, bring it back to council.
Madam Mayor, this is Leah Castella. I just wanted to clarify one issue before you take comments from the council. And I did note that a number of, there were a number of concerns expressed about clarity. And so I wanted to to just make it clear for the for the council that the the way the resolution has been sort of constructed is consistent with the way that really all laws are constructed, which is that they tell people what is prohibited. And 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 our objective in adopting this resolution and requiring that the resolution be adopted in a public forum is to make sure that people are told in a very specific way and in a in a public way, what is prohibited, and then to make that list available on our website and sort of generally available so that folks know what is in fact prohibited. So so while, you know, every law can always be clearer, we really have gone to great lengths in order to provide very detailed clarity for folks about what is prohibited under the oversized vehicle ordinance.
Thank you, Leah. Oh, yes, please, city manager.
Manager Kevin Woodhouse. I just wanted to add one point of clarification that was raised to point out in response to one of the the comments that the city council did adopt a resolution encouraging collaboration between agencies to evaluate the feasibility of a safe parking program to assist the unhoused in motorhomes and and has worked very much on that those potential, that potential program. That resolution was adopted on April twelfth of this year and and talks about collaboration with the PRC and the county.
Since you brought it up, I guess I'm going to add tag on to that to say, and work has been ongoing since that time in that regard.
But work has been, work has been ongoing for probably a year and a half related to.
The answer is.
Okay, um, Mr. Montemeyer, can you please double check the participants versus attendees? Thank you. Mr. Big Stick, Councilmember Big Stick, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. And perhaps our engineer Marquez can clear up for me something about Esplanade that's confusing me. The staff report says that the bike lanes are faded. So my understanding is that the way our ordinance is written, if there's a bike lane there, usually it's a safety concern because that constricts the width of the street. So are there supposed to be bike lanes there? I guess is my question.
Yeah, good question. Thanks for the question, Councilmember Big Stick. Our our biking, our our bicycle pedestrian master plan map showed that there are bicycle lanes there. Everything in in my documentation said that there were, in fact, bicycle lanes. However, when you go out to the site on one side of the road, there is absolutely no markings. On the other side of the road, there is extremely faded, pretty much cannot be seen at this time. So something to note also is it is the only block in this particular area that has bike lanes. So there's not, it's not a continuous stretch of of bike lanes like we like to usually do. And that there is a project to put in a bicycle route within the capital improvement program that looks to put in a bicycle route from Palmetto along Esplanade and back to Palmetto later on, reestablishing a longer bicycle route in this area.
Okay. That's helpful. Are we anticipating there's going to be a bike lane there at some point? Or like, what's the timeline then? If that's the plan, what is the timeline to put a bike lane in?
Apologies, I I don't have a timeline for that project. It was not selected for funding for this year's capital budget. So I'm unsure on that. We've been pursuing grants for that project, my understanding. We were hoping to get one in twenty twenty and this year, but have not been successful in that effort.
And in the meantime, while there is no marking, it wouldn't be appropriate under our. And in the meantime, while there is no marking, it wouldn't be appropriate under our ordinance to to not change that tonight. Thank you.
I have a question on that, if I might, just because it's on that same stretch. And it is in regard to the Bay Trail, the coast, I mean, the coastal trail. And I needed clarification and understanding of what segments. And you may not have the answer at your fingertips, but it seems like I had understood that part of the work at the northern part of that area with Esplanade Project itself, the project of three 10 to whatever four 40 Esplanade had to do with establishing a trail, a walking trail along that stretch. Am I accurate in that? Because I know it goes for the SFRV park at the far other end, but I'm not really sure sort of like what precedes that.
Sure. So there there is a, there's quite a few Esplanade projects, and they're all labeled by pretty much block, which can get confusing. So there is the three 10 to three 30 Esplanade Infrastructure Preservation Project. That does not look at establishing a coastal trail. There's the 400 Infrastructure Preservation Project, which currently does not necessarily look to implement a trail. However, it is taking into consideration that the city is planning and has planned and has put together plans to put in an element of the coastal trail along the 400 block of Esplanade. So there is plans in the works and and staff has been has has worked on that throughout the years and has been pursuing that project as well.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. Councilmembers, oh, Councilmember Vatterlos.
If there were a bike lane on Esplanade, would that street, that's a very wide street, would the bike lane inhibit the view of traffic? Or not, if there were a bike lane there?
Apologies, could you could you give me clarification?
I know that that wasn't very clear.
What do you mean, Sue?
If there if there was a bike lane there, would that deem that street too narrow for oversized vehicles?
We're not sure at this time.
I'm going to just interject here because what I do want to make clear for the council is that the it is difficult to tell whether that safety analysis would result in Esplanade going back on the prohibited list. But I want to make sure the council understands that you will always have that discretion. If there are changes made to Esplanade, creation of a bike lane, creation of a trail, that the traffic engineer evaluates and determines, create the safety issues that require that OSB parking be banned, then then you would have the ability to do that in the same way we're doing that here tonight by a resolution amending the list of prohibited parking.
Thanks for that clarification.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? I don't see any unless I'm missing it. Mayor Protem, back me up.
I don't see any. I I will say that I also had the same questions that Councilmember Big Stick presented. And I feel like the answer is still a little confusing to me. So like either there is a bike lane or there isn't a bike lane. And so if there's, I'm gonna, I am still confused about that. So maybe can you just say it one more time, Ryan? Like, yeah, can you just explain that to me one more time? Because it sounds like something says there is a bike lane, you just can't see it. But that could be because there's so much sand. I I'm a little confused about that part.
Sure. And I think the most important thing is, at this time, looking at that road, there is not, there's not appeared to be a bike lane that motorists or bicyclists would be able to use. And thus, our analysis of that road is that it would be safe for oversized vehicle parking at this time. That that's probably the best way I can explain it at this time is is our analysis at this time is showing that it is safe for OSB park.
Thank you. Yes, and again, just to clarify for for purposes of kind of understanding how the resolution is has been developed is that the the discretion of the traffic engineer is to evaluate the safety conditions as they exist and to determine whether those safety conditions make it appropriate to prohibit oversized vehicle parking on a particular roadway. And so when that analysis was conducted using both in the field assessment and the the information that is available on a variety of databases, the conclusion of the traffic engineer is that OSB parking on this portion of Esplanade is safe using the metrics that we have developed because there is not visibly a bike lane that that bicyclists can see, observe, and use. And so that based on that determination, this street has been removed from the the list that's attached to the resolution that you're considering tonight.
All right, then. I think we're ready to move on to our next consideration item, but we need to have a vote on this one. Yes, Councilmember Big Stick.
I move to waive the first reading. Do I need to do this as two separate motions or can I do it all as one motion?
City attorney?
Two two separate motions, please.
In that case, I move to waive the first reading and introduce by title only an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pacifica repealing section four dash seven point one one four one 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 four, excuse me, of article 11, stopping, standing, and parking of chapter seven traffic within title four of the Pacifica Municipal Code and amending article 12 of chapter seven traffic within title four of the Pacifica Municipal Code related to the regulation of parking and finding the ordinance exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Second.
For item eight dash one, moved by Councilmember Big Stick and seconded by Councilmember O'Neil. Call the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And item eight dash one passes with a vote of five to zero.
I move to adopt resolution approving updated list of public streets where oversized vehicle parking is prohibited and dismissing any citation issued under the oversized vehicle ordinance on streets not included on resolution ten dash 2020 and refunding fines paid for those citations.
Second.
Item eight dash two, moved by Councilmember Big Stick and seconded by Councilmember O'Neil. Call the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beer.
Yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And item eight dash two passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, City Clerk Coffee. We're moving on to item nine on consideration. Fireworks law and enforcement in Pacifica. Proposed action is to receive the report on fireworks law and enforcement in Pacifica from Chief of Police Dan Stile. Welcome, Chief Stile.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm Dan Stile, your chief of police. First, I just want to take a moment to apologize to the council for my lack of a good internet connection at the last council meeting when you were asking me questions about this. So hopefully I can provide some clarity to the questions that you were trying to ask me back on June 14th. Next slide, please. So as you recall, on June 14th at the council meeting, the topic of fireworks ordinances did come up during council communications. Specifically, there were references made to newly adopted ordinances in San Mateo County, which affects unincorporated San Mateo County and within the city of Menlo Park. And staff was directed to return the council with more information on a comparison of these ordinances and as well as what we have here in Pacifica. Next slide, please. So just a brief summary of these ordinances. San Mateo County ordinance, which again covers unincorporated San Mateo County, was adopted on May 18th of this year, and it relates to the possession and discharge of fireworks. All fireworks in unincorporated San Mateo County, including safe and sane fireworks, are illegal. There is a thousand dollar administrative fine that can be used for possession and discharge of illegal fireworks. And there's also strict liability for the discharge of fireworks for an owner or a lessee of private property or a person who hosts a gathering on public or private property. That's also known as a social host ordinance. Next slide, please. So there's also a component of San Mateo County code that provides for a misdemeanor criminal penalty if you choose criminal prosecution. It's a fine up to a thousand dollars and or six months imprisonment in the county jail, provided that the violation is a substantial factor in causing harm to persons or property, serious bodily injury to persons and or causes damage to real or physical property in excess of a thousand dollars. It also provides for recovery of response costs for any person issued a second administrative citation within any 12-month period. Next slide, please. So the Menlo Parks ordinance is similar in that it was modeled after the San Mateo County ordinance. Theirs was an urgency ordinance, the city Menlo Park that was adopted on June 8th and related to the discharge of fireworks. Also in the city of Menlo Park, all fireworks, including safe and sane fireworks, are illegal. So the Menlo Park ordinance also provides a thousand dollar administrative fine for discharge of illegal fireworks, but not possession. The possession of illegal fireworks is still handled handled under state law. There is a misdemeanor criminal penalty if they choose to criminally prosecute under the municipal code for a fine of up to a thousand dollars and six months imprisonment. And just like the county code, provided that there is the the use of fireworks is a substantial factor in causing harm to persons or property. Next slide, please. However, in the city of Menlo Park ordinance, there was no social host ordinance component, but there's also the clause that provides for recovery of response costs for any person issued a second administrative citation within any 12-month period. Next slide, please. So on to what we have here in Pacifica, as we know, fireworks classified as dangerous are prohibited in Pacifica. And dangerous fireworks are fireworks that aren't safe and sane fireworks, fireworks that aren't don't come with the state fire marshal's seal on them, and all of the safe and sane fireworks do do that. So here in Pacifica, our ordinance allows us to put a one thousand dollar administrative fine on a violation, on a violator for possession or discharge of dangerous fireworks. It also has the social host ordinance component, which again is strict liability for the discharge of fireworks for an owner or lessee of a private property or a person who hosts a gathering on public or private property. And our ordinance also does include a criminal component of a criminal penalty up to a fine of up to a thousand dollars and six months imprisonment in the county jail. Next slide, please. But we also have a different component in ours also because we do allow safe and sane. If you use safe and sane fireworks after the prohibited or after the hours or in an area where you're not allowed per our ordinance to use those safe and sane fireworks, you can be administratively fined, two hundred dollars for the first offense, four hundred for the second, and a thousand for a third offense. Whereas the possession or discharge of those dangerous, those illegal fireworks, that is a thousand dollar administrative fine for a first offense. There's no tiered scale for that. Our our code also has, we do not have a portion that allows us to recover cost, second recovery costs, response costs for a second violation with a year. We do have a clause that allows us to provide recovery costs related to collection, transportation, and disposal of illegal fireworks that we have confiscated from somebody. Next slide, please. So just a quick charting comparison, so you can see what we're looking at with the three, with the three jurisdictions. All three of our jurisdictions have a ministry, a thousand dollar administrative fine for illegal fireworks. Social host component is present in Pacifica and unincorporated San Mateo County, but not Menlo Park. And there's also a criminal option, a misdemeanor option for a thousand dollar fine and and or up to six months in the county jail for the possession discharge of of fireworks. However, again, Pacifica is is a little bit more strict in that we don't have to there's no component in there that says that there has to be bodily injury, have to harm somebody or property in order to proceed with that misdemeanor criminal violation. Next slide, please. So when we utilize these these enforcement options in Pacifica, prior to our administrative fine component of the ordinance, which we enacted in 2008, we would go with state law, California State Law 12677 of the Health and Safety Code, which is a misdemeanor. We still have that option today. It's either using, either doing the administrative fine of a thousand dollars or the misdemeanor violation. If we choose the misdemeanor criminal violation, we usually go with the state law and prosecute through the district attorney's office. The reason being is it may take several court appearances for a low-level misdemeanor violation to proceed through the system. Several times, the officer would have to go to court. So if we if we utilize the municipal code for that violation, the district attorney would not be the one prosecuting, it would be the city attorney that would be prosecuting. City attorney prosecutes municipal code violations. And so we would incur city attorney fees for each of those appearances and each of those times we went to court before a case would actually reach disposition. And more often than not, we find in these cases that they're usually pled down to infractions with usually small fines. So it's for those reasons that we enacted the 2008 administrative fine portion of the ordinance. And that's for the most part what we use in the high majority of illegal fireworks cases that we come across today. Next slide, please. So there was a question regarding civil actions, whether we needed to put something in our municipal code so that a community member could sue one of their neighbors civilly for nuisance violations for illegal fireworks discharge. And we were advised by the city attorney's office that under our California Civil Code, a private person can already bring a civil lawsuit against their neighbor, their neighbor for a private or possibly a public nuisance relating to the discharge of fireworks if the facts supported causes of action. So there's nothing further needed in our ordinance for that to occur. Next slide, please. Well, conclusion, you know, tonight, we we've we have provided a comparison of the newly adopted ordinances of San Mateo County for the unincorporated areas and the city of Menlo Park. And our ordinance in Pacifica provides the same administrative fines for illegal fireworks violations as well as the same misdemeanor penalties for prosecution of the ordinance we choose to criminally prosecute using the ordinance. And again, actually, the criminal component of Pacifica's ordinance is a little more strict in that we don't have to prove bodily injury or over a thousand dollars of property damage before we use the ordinance for a misdemeanor prosecution if we so choose to do the do that. So based on the comparison of the ordinances, staff believes that our municipal code provides adequate enforcement options for illegal fireworks, possession and discharge, and there's no amendment to our ordinance that's warranted. And I'm happy to entertain any questions.
So so chief, based on what you've just said about if the council was to pass an ordinance to declare fireworks a public nuisance, then is there any benefit to us doing that? I mean, because one of the issues, you you and I have been in those task forces together. And I mean, you basically have to see the guide lighting the fuse in order for the police to do anything. But a neighbor might actually see that and can actually do a civil lawsuit or whatever. Is there any, should the council consider declaring them a public nuisance?
Fireworks. And I believe our ordinance actually already calls illegal fireworks a public nuisance.
Okay, so.
It always, it always, and there's and there is, and there is remedy for nuisance abatement in there as well, which allows us to take the fireworks and and whatnot, confiscate them.
Like you have somebody that lets off a bunch of illegal fireworks, okay? And they call the police, they can actually say, I want to sue them as a public nuisance?
Provided, provided it meets the conditions under the law, but that's something they do privately. That's not something that the the city does.
Right, so we would have no enforcement of it. Because I, when I look, when I looked up public nuisance, and granted, this was just a Google search, right? I mean, it's not, I'm not a lawyer. But it said that there was actually could be the district attorney. But it said that there was actually, could be the district attorney involved sending a letter and saying it has to be cleaned up or taken care of within seven days, but I guess that's really not more applicable for fireworks. Because I was, what I'm looking at, what I was thinking of is we had some neighbor here setting off, you know, firecrackers at, you know, midnight. And I opened my door to try to listen to see where it was coming from, and I couldn't even tell which house. But I'm sure the guy next door could, you know? And so in that case, there's nothing they can do, correct? Or what would be the actions citizens could do?
Yes, you know, if I could just jump in here, Councilmember O'Neil, there is a private civil action for a nuisance. So private property owners can bring civil actions against neighbors or other residents who they believe are creating a public nuisance. The city doesn't get involved in those, but there is, if your question is, is there a private cause of action or the ability for private property owners to sue for a nuisance? Yes, there is.
Okay, okay. And they would just have to look that up to find out how to do that. Okay, and that answers my questions. Thank you, Michelle and Dan.
You're welcome.
I'm checking to see if other council members have questions. And I don't see any. So, oh, there's, you were right behind that little box that pops up when you look to see if people have their hand raised. Please go ahead, Councilmember Battleas.
Um, isn't it true that after we do the fireworks, after it's all over, you come back and give us a report of the number of people that you did catch because someone recently indicated in one of the social media items that you've never told us, and I believe you tell us every time.
Yeah, that's, that's, there's always a, a report that I give to council. In past years, it hasn't been until September because that's, it's the middle of September is when all of the, the numbers are due from the fireworks groups. And that's when we know the eight percent safety fee that we get of their gross receipts. That's when I'm able to report back to that. I believe we actually reported back earlier last year just because of the talk of putting and putting the safe and sane issue on the ballot and whatnot. We came earlier, but yes. Every year since I've been chief, I've reported out to council regarding activity. And as well as any arrests were made and how many administrative fines were issued.
Thank you.
All right, um, have a comment. Mr. Montemeyer, can we check and see if there's any?
There we have two hands raised. Our first speaker is Remy Tan, followed by Gloria Stofan. Remy Minassidi.
Hi, this is Remy Tan, Pacific Manor. It seems like every year, you know, especially around the Fourth of July, you know, there's all these illegal fireworks. And, you know, I've lived around different cities in the Bay Area and, you know, Pacifica is one of the worst. And I kind of have to believe that it's due to the allowance of the safe and sane. And people kind of think, oh, they probably don't read that little state fire marshal thing. And they think, well, anything we buy is, is safe and sane. And, you know, we got M-80s and, you know, professional quality fireworks. And there's so much of it that there's no way that Chief Stidle and his, and his crew can really really enforce it. And given the drought situation and the dryness of all the grass, you know, I think even the safe and sane fireworks are, you know, a potential hazard. Especially if they get lit and, you know, it touches some grass and we have a, you know, a wildfire situation. I mean, yes, you know, we have a lot of fog here, but, you know, we have a couple of dry days with, you know, offshore winds that grass is dry and it will catch on fire. I mean, there, there've been fires, you know, down in Santa Barbara, right on the coast, you know, in the past. So I would, you know, strongly urge the city council to basically take the same stance as the county of San Mateo and just outright ban fireworks. It's not worth the risk of having somebody's house burnt down, you know, in this extreme drought that we have. Appreciate it. Oh, and also people with dogs, I've seen on the next door. Apparently a lot of dogs and cats, you know, and pets have issues with, with the fireworks as well. So that's not really fair to those pet owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Our next speaker is Gloria Stofan. Gloria, you're non-muted.
Uh, yes, my name's Gloria Stofan and I want to go on record and I also echo Remy Tan, the speaker before me, that I still urge the city council to vote against safe and sane fireworks as illegal. To me, they are a public nuisance. It just doesn't happen during the Fourth of July. It occurs throughout the year at all times. And many are affected, many who suffer from, and you've heard this from me before, suffer from PTSD, the pets are affected. And now added to all of this, the climate change and the wildfires. Down in Danvaport, they had this, this wildfire that went down to the beach. So, and that's not far from us. Anyway, how many times do we have to come before this issue? Why not just put it out there and safe and sane are, is illegal? And that's how it, how it needs to be. Also, I was just wondering if there was more, any more information coming from the state addressing this? That I'm keeping my hopes and having some faith in the government, the state government, that maybe they'll issue all types of fireworks illegal for the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Our next speaker is Cheryl Dickinson. Cheryl, you're non-muted. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me? It's Cheryl Dickinson.
Yes, I can hear you.
Hi, good evening, city council. Thank you for having this topic on the agenda. I really appreciate it. I did attend the fire safety meeting that occurred with North County. And I was hoping to get more information about how the city of Pacifica was going to protect us from fires. I found it informational, but I'm calling in because I, I really would love to see Pacifica take a leadership role in showing other cities how to stop illegal fireworks. I agree with the other speakers that, you know, the safe and sane, you know, basically is, is just hundreds of people, you know, lighting a match, and we have a lot of dry landscape. In fact, a lot of neighbors in my neighborhood haven't even weeded their yards. They have, you know, three foot high fox tails. And we, we're not exempt from having a major fire, and it's irresponsible to allow fireworks to occur in our city. I really sincerely believe that, and I'm scared for our community during Fourth of July. And I think the city could take the lead also on helping fundraisers find other ways to raise money. I think people would be less inclined to really miss the fireworks, or there will be some that will miss them. But if there were other ways to raise money for the schools, I, I find it insane that schools are selling fireworks for, for money. I like, I like the, the topic that was brought up on raising funds through that, through businesses like that yoga business. So there, there's, there, there is a lot of, of ways to do something. And if the state was to ban safe and sane fireworks, the, the nonprofits would, or the school organizations would have to find other ways to raise money anyways. So why not find a way while you have the safe and sane and then double up and then they'll have a solution. But we really need to end it. Lindemar is a complete nightmare. We have fireworks every night here, bombs. And on Fourth of July, there's, I usually can count eight to 10. Our full-fledged firework displays going off two over my house. I've had debris in my yard. It's just out of control and I can't afford to leave town. And I don't, I don't want to leave my house. I'm outside wasting water, hosing down my roof, hosing down my property. So we really, I really urge you to take some leadership and find better ways to enforce fireworks. Put together a police task force. Bring in new technology, do something different. We need, we really need it. We really appreciate it if you could do that. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm seeing no more hands raised at this time.
All right, Ben, we'll bring it back to council. Thank you very much.
I got your hand up.
I see, I was just trying to figure out who has their hand up. Please go ahead, Councilmember Big Stick.
Thank you very much. And the public's comments are well taken, and as much as I would love to rehash a conversation on safe and sane fireworks, I would need, I would feel like I would need support from others who would feel the same way, first of all. And second of all, tonight, really, the topic of discussion is the illegal fireworks. And so if anybody else wants to, feel free to chime in. But on the topic of illegal fireworks, and I've, I've sat in on a number of these meetings myself over the years, even when I was not on council. And chief, in your estimation, is there anything we could try at this point to stop illegal fireworks that we have not already tried? Is there any way to augment the laws we already have on the books that we have not already augmented?
Yeah, there, there's nothing I can recommend as far as augmenting our laws and books in that our, our administrative fine, our civil fine is already as high as that we can make it at a thousand dollars. I think one of the big issues is not really that the laws that we have in place in our local government. The question is the laws that we have in place at the state level. And I'll give you an example. Unless you're talking about, you know, large gray like M-100s or M-1000s large fireworks, if you're talking about just your, your average illegal firework, your roman candles, things like that that are, that are going off, it takes 5,000 pounds of those before it's even what's called a wobbler, meaning you can charge it as a misdemeanor or a felony. So what we're hearing is these trucks, truckloads are coming into our state from out of state with up to 5,000 pounds, and these people are getting a misdemeanor citation going on about their business. And they're, they're getting, you know, they're getting, getting the fireworks confiscated. Now, there are some big fines attached to that. But these, they're making so much money doing so. And there currently is some legislation, AB 1497, which would plausibly increase the fines, the criminal penalties for possession or discharge of illegal fireworks. And more than double in some cases, but as I've seen that, as I last checked, that, that bill has stalled as of margin, it hasn't gone anywhere yet. So I just haven't really seen any will in the state at the legislative level to increase and take more an active role in putting some laws in place that's going to, that will really discourage it. And, you know, in the chief's organizations, we've talked about this at the state level. The big problem is they're so easy to get into the state. And I mean, there's states around us where they're allowed, and you can get large quantities in the state relatively easy.
Um, so thank you for bringing up AB 1497. This is the first I'm hearing about it. And I've heard you say a number of times that the reason our thousand dollar administrative fine is capped is because of the state. So going into this meeting, it was kind of on the back of my head that if council might go for it, I would love to do a resolution just saying, you know, we support the state raising that cap. But if we already have a law that's trying to make it through, it seems like it might be even easier, again, if council has the interest to have city managers send a resolution simply saying, hey, we really support 181497. Would you please be so kind as to put this through? We encourage you to pass it. Otherwise, I feel like I, I'm constantly banging my head on a wall made of fireworks. You know, at this point, not just year after year, but six month after six month. And whenever one goes off, wow, you know, it's as dry as dry can be. Whenever I see no rain and a firework flash, I think to myself, ooh, pretty. I wonder if our entire community is going to go up in flames now. And, and I'm throwing my hands up, and if we could at least do a resolution supporting 1497, I would feel like we're at least not doing nothing.
This reference, I met with Senator Becker's assistant. I asked her to talk to him about raising the fine that a city can, maximum fine for a city, raise it from a thousand dollars to five or $10,000, okay? Because obviously, just based on what Chief Stidle said, these people are making a lot of money. You know, and it's just a cost of doing business, paying a thousand dollar fine, you know? So I would support having that resolution before council. And another letter to Kevin Mullin and Becker about, you know, sponsoring legislation to raise the fines for cities, do both.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, regarding 1497, I could do a little more research on that. I'm not sure if that's dead or not. It, it was introduced in February and it was sent to the governmental organization, Committee on a Governmental Organization on the 27th of March, and it's where it has stalled. And it, it, it's, there's a possibility that that never made it out of that committee. I just can't tell from the website that I was looking, I could look into that further, so it may not even be an option at this point.
Specifically, 1497 is dead. I would still favor, you know, at this point, a letter writing campaign. And I'm inviting the community, please, write your lawmakers on the state level. You know, and including a letter from us, generally, please, I love the idea of a $10,000 fine.
So I, I realized tonight we're just supposed to receive a report on firework ordinance enforcement in Pacifica, right? And that's, that's what we're talking about tonight. And Councilmember Big Stick alluded to maybe having another conversation about safe and sane fireworks. And I, I gotta tell you, I am, I am scared. I'm scared. I live in Valleymar, and I, so I am, I'm afraid this year, and I don't quite know how to handle that. And so if there's any way possible that anyone else would be interested in rehashing, I would really appreciate that conversation. And then I don't even know what that could look like because we're already selling them. So, you know, I, I'm just not sure what the, what that would look like.
So if I could just jump in and provide one suggestion, I think with regard to doing anything this year in terms of banning fireworks or eliminating fireworks, that is not likely, that's not a possible option. But what, but the council can do tonight is to give direction to staff to bring an item back for future discussion about fireworks for the following year. And, and a lot of communities are doing that. Because your, your sentiment that I hear being expressed tonight is one, given the potential drought season that we're now in, has a lot of communities concerned. And so they, a lot of communities are revisiting this issue, understanding that, that there's nothing that they can do at this late hour or late day for this Fourth of July.
And, and I know we had already talked about, right, putting it on the ballot, so, yeah. Matta lost too.
Yeah, if I may, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager, I, I just wanted to remind the council of the past discussions and decision from last year related to the future of the Safe and Sane Fireworks Program was that, that decision should be put to the voters and direction from council to plan to do that in November of 2022. Now, insofar as there's other actions the council may be interested in taking, that could be a separate conversation. But, you know, every, every year we've worked on this topic and last year brought it to the point of it needs another public vote was the majority direction from the council. So, you know, we will have that on the work plan for next spring to prepare for that ballot measure in November of 2022.
Okay, and that does, you know, as stated, address safe and sane. I think what I hear Councilmember Big Stick speaking of regarding AB 1497 is some actual tiny glacial movement in regard to addressing illegal fireworks. So I too, Chief Stidle, doing a quick search cannot verify that this ever got out of Committee on Government Affairs. So I think it's dead for this year. But that doesn't mean it can't be reintroduced next year. So I don't know what the right direction is to give to council, I mean, to staff on that, but I would support something about 1497 or whatever the successor bill is. Some sort of resolution, some sort of statement of support, dah dah dah. But right now is, it's too late for this session.
How about asking staff to come back? If, if there is a bill to re-regulate illegal fireworks, come back with a letter, resolution authorized that the council would support passage of that. Then also a separate letter asking for the fine limit for specific, if they need to be specific for fire, illegal fireworks be raised to $10,000 for cities to charge.
I agree. Are you making a motion? Do we need to make a motion? City attorney?
I think we just give the direction.
Correct. Just give a consensus for a direction to staff and staff will bring an item back.
I agree with what Councilmember O'Neil just said.
We need a consensus from, so.
And
There was four, at least four, there's five.
Okay, good. We have five. We're done. With this slide. Yes, council?
Yes.
Very good. Let's move on. Item 11. Consider.
Number 10.
Right past 10. That was so fast. Okay, do we need a small break before we tackle into this one? Or are we gonna pass this one and then have a small break?
Breaks aside, it's 10:33. Shall we make a motion to extend? I, I usually shoot for an upward limit and then hope that we not hit it. So I'd be inclined to make a motion that we extend the meeting to 1:00 AM.
One, two, one, two.
Midnight.
I withdraw my motion now.
I'll unplug your computer before 12:01, okay?
All right.
Make a motion, we extend it till midnight.
I'll second.
For the motion to, by Councilmember O'Neil to extend the meeting to midnight, seconded by Big Stick, Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Votarlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Motion to extend to midnight passes unanimously.
And Mayor Beckmeyer, I would appreciate a small break. Thank you.
I would too. It's 10:34. Let's come back at 10:39. Thank you. Of the fiscal year 2021-22 operating and capital budget. Proposed action, review the recommended fiscal year 2021-22 budget and move to adopt the resolution approving the fiscal 2122 operating and capital budget, adopt the fiscal 2122 capital improvement program appropriation of $995,200 from the Roy Davies Trust Fund by a four out of five vote. Number three, adopt the resolution establishing GAN appropriation limit for fiscal year 2122. Number four, adopt the resolution approving the city's annual review of the investment policy included in Exhibit A to the resolution with no changes for fiscal 2122. And number five, adopt the resolution approving city's fiscal year 2122 master fee schedule as included as Exhibit A to the resolution. And we will have staff report from our director of our city manager and Chief Fiscal Sustainability Officer and Assistant City Manager.
All right, just the, just the two of us for now.
All right, go for it.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer, Mayor Pro Tem Beer and, and Councilmembers, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I'm, I'm pleased to be presenting tonight this proposed balanced budget. And you know what, I, I'm just gonna make some introductory comments and hit on the first couple of slides and then turn it over to Chief Financial Sustainability Officer, Julia Carter, to go through the presentation. What I was gonna do is read verbatim my city manager budget transmittal memo of 12 pages. Cause that's a very thorough summary of the budget, but given the hour and, you know, other items on the agenda, I think I'll forego that. But to say in all seriousness, that to the community as, as well, that that transmittal memo is intended to be an executive summary of the budget, the process and some of the accomplishments and challenges that we're tackling in this budget. So I'd be remiss if I didn't begin with thank yous to, first of all, to the city council for your patience and diligence through this entire budget process and the number of meetings we've gone through. Then to the budget team of Assistant City Manager Waremeister and Chief Financial Sustainability Officer Carter and Management Analyst Josh Montemur or and Financial Services Manager Sheila Choiow, who's also with us tonight. For the hard work that has gone into this budget. Thank you to all of the department directors and the work that they've put in in developing their department budgets. And one thing I want to mention is that this has been a long process. If, let me, let me go ahead and skip to the next slide, please. I'll go through the budget timeline and that's where I'll talk about this process that we've engaged in. And then Ms. Carter will hit on the highlights, the changes since the last council meeting, budget overview and the recommendation to adopt. Next slide, please. In terms of the process, the schedule that you see here, you know, starts with the April 12th narrative budget report, long-term forecast. But in actuality, our work on this budget, because of the challenges due to COVID, really began last fall, where we had promised to do a very substantial mid-year budget analysis of how revenues were performing during the pandemic and how, what are, what the hits to our, what expenditure, expenditures were through, through the first half of the year. So that mid-year process really segwayed into the council's goal setting, the narrative budget report, adoption of goals, the long-term forecast. As mentioned previously tonight, the civic center funding strategy was a significant portion of this because that, that funding strategy is included in this budget. And then all of the steps in the very specific budget development. So you know, we are excited to be at this point in a difficult and challenging year with COVID impacts. We estimated that we, our revenues have been impacted by $2.1 million due to COVID. And the American Rescue Plan Act funding, signed into law by the president in March and guidelines developed by the treasury are a key part of this budget to what I would summarize to be a cautiously optimistic outlook for Pacifica's economic recovery and some exciting programs and projects forthcoming in the next fiscal year. And that's really what we've accomplished in this budget. We are gonna make progress on all of the city council priorities and we're gonna continue the excellent programs and services that the city offers. And with the assistance of federal ARPA funding, we're gonna be able to do some things that kickstart Pacifica's economic recovery. And hopefully that will sustain into the future. So you know, that's, that's my transmittal memo in, in a nutshell. But you can read the 12 pages at a different time and I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Carter now.
Thank you, Kevin. Next slide. So let's start with recommendation that is before you today. Madam Mayor already read the resolution that I in your packet. So we have four resolution included in your packet today. The first one is to adopt the budget. The second one is to establish GAN appropriation limit for the upcoming year, which is required by the state constitution. We also have a resolution for annual approval of investment policy, which is also government court requirement. But again, as listed in the staff report, we haven't made any changes to the investment policy. So it's just included for you for reference. And the final resolution is to approve updated the master fee schedule with annual CPI increase and this resolution and the master fee schedule also included in the budget book that is included in your attachments. And the master fee schedule was discussed with the council on May 10th and 14th. And since those meetings, we haven't made any additional changes to that as well. Next slide. Before we dive into the budget details, let's take a look at the highlights for the fiscal year 2122 budget. As the city manager mentioned, we are bringing forward the structurally balanced budget. The budget is considered structurally balanced when operating expenses, revenues are equal or exceed the operating expenditures. And that's what we will see throughout this presentation. The general fund revenues are projected at 40.9 million, which is 10.8% above the fiscal year 2021 revised budget level. This figure includes 4.2 million of ARPA funds that are programmed for the general fund. The general fund expenditures are budgeted at 42.4 million, which is about 15% above the 2021 revised budget level. This number includes 1 million in ARPA stimulus funds allocated for fiscal year 2122 for general fund programs and we will review that list again later in the presentation. And I also want to mention that this leaves about 1.1 million of unprogrammed yet ARPA funds for the future uses. And this is intentional as it gives the council opportunities to revisit the city's economic outlook and the climate at mid-year and see how, how much progress we are making in post-pandemic recovery and make any necessary strategic adjustments at mid-year to make additional allocation of the ARPA funds at that time. The expenditures also include one-time capital transfers and we included it here. So it's $3 million towards civic center capital project. Again, we'll talk about it a little bit later in the presentation as well. And finally, the general fund balance projections include $3 million, which is about 7.7% of operating expenditures. So this $3 million is in undesignated general fund balance, which is together with another 10% of 4.2 million policy reserve makes it compliant with the GFOA government guidelines for government entities. And those guidelines call for two months of regular operating expenditures, which would be about 6.6 million for for the upcoming fiscal year 2122. Next slide. At the last meeting, we received a very clear direction from the council for preparation of the budget. So in the next two slides, we just want to share a couple of updates from the last meeting. And the first one is related to the labor agreements. Fiscal year 2122 budget does not include any assumptions related to the outcome of the negotiations. Yet, as we shared with you before, the current labor agreements will expire at the end of the current fiscal year. The city continues good faith negotiations under the Myers Millers Brown Act with the all labor groups at this moment. And because of the one-time nature of the ARPA funds, those stimulus funds could not be used for any ongoing labor increases. So following the city manager's direction, all department directors identified service level reduction options in their departments equivalent to 1 or 2% of operating budget to offset any potential labor-related increases. Since we are not quite done with the labor negotiations as of this moment today, staff will present the service level reductions, options to council later at the future meetings with the request to amend the fiscal year 2122 budget. Again, once negotiations are complete and new labor agreements in place. Next slide. And the second update is related to the insurance cost. Since the last meeting, we received the final premium budget for the workers' compensation and general liability insurance premiums. So the good news here that the workers' compensation premium is going down by almost 300,000. This is a great accomplishment by our human resources department and is a result of HR effort in closing a number of old claims in the past year, which definitely improved our experience base for the premium calculation. But not so good news on the general liability front. And the general liability premium is increasing about, by about 350,000. This is because of the hard market cycle nationwide. So pretty much every entity is dealing with the similar problems right now. So this cycle causing an increase in insurance coverage costs all across the board from general liability to property and cybersecurity. And the city of Pacifica is a member of Plan GPA Insurance Pool. And this negative trends resulted in Plan GPA's insurance finish increase by almost $6 million for fiscal year 2122. So Pacifica's share of this increase is about 350,000. And again, this, this increases compared to, to the last year. We accounted for these changes by including the transfer from, from workers' compensation fund into the general liability fund by passing the general fund. And the additional general liability insurance premium will be covered by general liability fund balance reserves, which is about additional 48,000. So in this presentation, in the budget book, you, you, you won't see negative impact on the general fund budget for the upcoming year. But I do want to point out that we will revisit But I do want to point out that we will revisit how we account for this, uh, internal cost in the future once we complete the cost allocation study, which is also scheduled and programmed for the upcoming year. Next slide. Now let's quickly look at the general fund revenues. Again, uh, we haven't made any changes in general fund revenues from the previous meeting, but we just listed this, uh, slide for you today again, so you can kind of refresh your memory and, and, uh, look at the, uh, assumptions that we used for the revenue estimates. And then you can see that the revenues are projected to go up by almost eleven percent over the revised budget level. And we pretty much gradually transition into the pre-COVID level. And just to go over the top revenue categories on the slide, uh, you can see that property taxes projected to go up by two point seven percent to a total of almost fourteen million. Uh, sales taxes projecting to increase of about ninety thousand to three point six percent. Transit occupancy taxes projected gradual return to the conservative pre-COVID estimates of one point seventy five million, uh, which is about four hundred thousand above the revised level. And, uh, the other taxes category includes, um, increases in cannabis and business license taxes that we discussed in the previous meetings. And finally, the department and program revenue category increase includes the ARPA stimulus funds that we will discuss in detail in future slides. Next slide. Now let's take, take a look at the expenditure side. The general fund expenditures are budgeted at forty two point four million, which is an increase of about fifteen percent over the revised level. Uh, we discussed changes to the budget over the last few meetings. Um, but I want to go over the major variances here as well. Uh, the general government, uh, increase is mainly related to the one-time ARPA-related funding um, that we programmed for the upcoming year. And again, we will have another slide for, for that. Um, for department budget increases related to annual motor pool expenses, uh, related to gas and fleet maintenance. The increases in parks, um, beaches and recreation department are related to restoring the part-time salaries and contract teachers, uh, positions. As you, um, have heard earlier today, so we're really excited to start the programs again. And, um, and the, the additional increase here in the same department also related to additional general services and cleaning supply that we included here to account for new COVID-related protocols. Cleaning protocols mostly and, uh, protective equipment. Uh, the non-departmental expenses increase, uh, is due to difference on how we account for the pension obligation bond debt service. So this is a little bit of accounting, uh, change here. Uh, we are now recording this as expense and debt service fund. And you will see in the transfer out category, you will see the corresponding increase, which, uh, pretty much related to, uh, eight hundred and eighty thousand transferred to debt service fund for, uh, pension obligation bond debt and the three million transfer to capital uh, for civic center CIP, as I already mentioned before. Next slide. Uh, speaking about CIP, again, you, you've seen the slide before. There are no changes to the CIP program from the previous meetings when we discussed the CIP and the receptive direction. The CIP budget document is attached for your review today and is part of your packets. The fiscal year twenty one, twenty two program is budgeted at twenty six million, which includes outside grants, reimbursements, partial borrowings for the civic center project and the use of available fund reserves and fund balances in the other funds. So the general fund contribution is only limited to one project for the upcoming year, which is our civic center CIP project with three million dollar transfers, as I already mentioned. Next slide. Uh, similar to the previous slide, there are no new updates related to the American Rescue Plan Act. But I do want to share with the council that, uh, since the last meeting, the city has submitted, uh, an application and we anticipate to receive the four point six million, uh, for a strange location at the beginning of the fiscal year. And we did program this, uh, revenues and partially programmed the expenditures for the upcoming budget as well. The total portion of ARPA funds, um, is still nine point two billion, uh, with, again, remaining amount expected to be allocated twelve, in twelve months, uh, interval, which will be available for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. And again, there is no change, um, to the allowable use of ARPA funds that is listed here. So I'm not going to repeat it here. So we can just go to the next slide. Uh, at the last, uh, few meetings, we also discussed the proposed funding options for twenty one, twenty two. So they're summarized here. Again, the ARPA funds, uh, will be compliant with treasury guidelines, uh, will follow municipal government financing principles. We'll use it to replenish lost revenues, provide grant funding for small businesses. Uh, and, uh, the last bullet here is related to studies and projects, that would stimulate the local recovery and improve city's tax revenues impacted by pandemic. So again, no change in the proposed funding options. Next slide. Uh, once again, you've seen this list before. We just presented it a little bit differently, uh, here to highlight how we program the ARPA findings for the upcoming year. So you can see easily, um, the amount related to the revenue losses. It's the first, um, first line here, two point one million. And, uh, we are including this amount in the revenues to be able to continue, uh, government services as they are today. So again, this is compliant with ARPA users. And the bottom portion of this, uh, table marked in yellow on the left, that represents ARPA eligible expenses that are programmed for the twenty one, twenty two budget. And again, all of this, uh, were discussed before. There is no change in, in any of this, uh, plans or allocations. The only thing I want to highlight is that, uh, all in the term positions are budgeted assuming twenty five percent vacancy rate. Uh, as you well know, it takes time to complete successful recruitment. So we assume that if the budget is approved tonight, we may be able to open recruitment in July and hopefully we'll have these positions filled and employees on board by September. Next slide. Now to complete the review of the general fund, uh, let's take a look at the general fund budgetary reserves, uh, once again. Uh, if you compare the slide with the slide that we presented at the last meeting, you will see that we haven't made any changes to the general fund. Um, again, I want to bring your attention to items in red. Um, if the budget is approved tonight, as presented, the general fund unassigned fund balance is projected to be a little bit over three million dollars, which is about seven point seven percent of the operating expenditures. And again, this figure alone is below the GFO recommended level. But together with the additional ten percent policy designation of four point two million, which is listed, um, above on the slide, kind of in the middle of the slide. Together, these two figures comply with the GFO standards for government entities of having no less than two months of regular general fund operating expenditures, which again, in our case, will translate into approximately six point six million for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two budget. Next slide. Uh, now very quickly about the projected fund balances for other funds. Uh, there are no major changes to other funds from the last meeting. Again, other than, uh, risk management adjustments that we already discussed, uh, today, uh, this adjustments mostly affect the internal service fund category. Uh, the summary of revenues, expenditures and fund balances for all city funds, one by one, I included in your packets, uh, attachment number three and also included in the budget book. And I also want to point out that this are total fund balances. This are not the cash balances. So some of these numbers will include capital assets specifically in sewer and water pool fund. Um, so it's important to keep this in mind. And we can go to next slide. Just to summarize everything we discussed tonight, the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, uh, proposed budget is balanced. Again, which means that operating expenditures do not exceed the period in revenues. And the access and expenditure to one-time capital spending, uh, that is programmed in the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two CIP budget. The general fund, uh, includes forty point nine million in revenues, which includes four point two million in one-time ARPA funds and, uh, forty two point four million expenditures, which again includes three million dollars and, uh, three million, uh, in capital transfer, which is also considered to be one-time, uh, towards the civic center CIP. The general fund projected fund balance includes three million or seven point seven, um, percent of expend, of operating expenditures. And when combined with four point two million in additional policy commitment, we are compliant with the GFO recommended guidelines. Uh, the budget also includes about one point one in ARPA revenues that we haven't yet allocated for specific programs. And we will revisit that again, as I mentioned before, at mid-year when we have more information and more, hopefully more certainty on post-COVID recovery and economic outlook. And finally, the CIP budget of twenty six million, uh, includes outside findings and then three million dollar transfer for the civic center. And now we can jump to next slide. Which brings us to the recommendation slide that is before you tonight. Again, you have four resolutions to adopt today. And, uh, I also want to echo the city manager's remarks and want to take a moment to thank the entire budget, um, team. And, uh, specifically, our financial services manager and management analyst and, uh, for all the help that, that we received from them to in preparing the budget document. I also want to thank the entire executive team for the hard work over the last month and, uh, commitment to this community. And I do want to thank the city manager and assistant city manager for all the help and guidance in bringing this budget to the finishing line today. And finally, I also do want to thank the city council for your leadership and support in managing the city's finances in transparent and fiscal manner, fiscal responsible manner. And that concludes my presentation. So I'm prepared to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I'm trying to see if I have council questions. I don't see any hands raised. Oh, can't see it. Go ahead, Councilmember O'Neill.
Hi, I was, um, I wanted to see about amending the capital budget to delete any funds for the Sharp Park bike lane. I think we've all gotten emails clearly designating that is not something the community wants. So I would just assume delete it out of the budget tonight, get it over with.
And, uh, if I could, if I could clarify that the, uh, I know the, the mention of studying that project is listed in a, in a future year in the CIP. It's not funded, uh, in the CIP. Similarly, many of the other, uh, lane reduction or bike lane projects that are listed in the CIP aren't funded. So.
So then.
Was not approving any funding, that, that action would be, you know, to consider whether to study that project would be taken in a future year in the CIP, similar to, to other, uh, bike lane projects.
Right. But when I, when I called it out at the last council meeting, because I went back and I looked at the bicycle master plan, it basically said, you know, Sharp Park Road Bike Lane or, and it's, I might have even said existing, okay? Nowhere did it say that it was gonna be an actual lane reduction for cars in the bicycle plan, which we approved. Then, when I asked about it at the last meeting in the C, when we were discussing the CIP, that's where the road diet came in, that the road was gonna be made smaller. And in my opinion, I don't care how many studies you have, that's gonna be less safe. Because I, I rode that road when it was narrower, okay? And I drove that road and it was scary, okay? Now they do have that divider in the middle for, there was a lot of head-on collisions. And I would, and I don't care whether it's not being funded now or not. I would like to see, I make an emotion that it be, uh, deleted out of the capital budget for future years, this year and future years to study.
And I, I know that that and again, the other bike lane projects or road diets were studied and included in the bike pedestrian master plan.
Kid, well, nowhere did it say the word, word road diet in the bicycle master plan. And what other streets are on a diet?
Um, I think, I think Director Peterson, uh, or Deputy Director Batista might be able to provide some more detail about the ten or so bike lane projects recommended that are, that are like that.
Just the ten that are, are diets. That's the only ones I'm asking about.
Thank you, Lisa Peterson, Director of Public Works. Um, actually, we're, we're lucky tonight because we have both our Deputy Director Batista and, uh, Ryan Marquez, who actually was, uh, one of our project, uh, our project manager for the bicycle pedestrian master plan. The bicycle pedestrian master plan does discuss, um, I think it's eleven segments of road that are being looked at for road diet. Um, and typically, when you put in a class four bike lane, because those do require a, uh, additional width from the road in order to install those, those protected bike lanes, those are often put in through a road diet. That's often the only way that you can get those in. Um, but I, I wanted to see if either Deputy Director Batista or, um, if Mr. Marquez can jump on here and have some, a bit more background on what those other segments were that were listed as a road diet in the bicycle pedestrian master plan. And I can try to pull it up as well here, but, uh, maybe, um, maybe Deputy Director Batista, do you want to start?
Well, I mean, given the hour, the only one I really want to make a concern about is the Sharp Park Road one. That's the one I noticed in the capital budget, okay? And that's, that's my motion is to delete the study for the cap, for the Sharp Park Road bike lane diet. With the repaving, restriping the existing bike lane, I have no problem with that. Okay, but actually making the street one lane less safe for everybody, bicyclists as well as cars, I don't think even needs to be studied. It's like, it's like the border supervisor studying why there's more traffic in the neighborhood because they closed the great highway. You know what I mean?
So, so if I could just clarify, there is no money right now that is, is designated to, towards that project. Um, similar to any of the projects that are listed in the bicycle pedestrian master plan, the bicycle pedestrian master plan could be brought back to the council and the council could amend that in any way that they, they would like. Um, and that's certainly something that could be done. Currently, uh, all the projects, the majority of the projects that are in there are not funded. And this again is something that is not funded, although it is, it is listed in there, uh, along with many other unfunded projects.
Okay, okay. If there's no money in there and it's not being funded, then it should be really easy to delete, to delete. Okay, I mean, I just don't understand why it can't be deleted if it's not even being funded. So that we just kill it, so. So that we just kill it so there is no money spent on the study. That's the part I'm escaping.
I would like to ask staff to please look at packet page three eighty-five. The project at the top of the page is Sharp Park Road Resurfacing and Separated Bicycle Lane Project. And the way that this project is described, it includes resurfacing of the road. And then it states, additionally, if technical and infield pilot studies conclude feasible with little to no impact on traffic flow, the road will undergo a road diet where there will be one vehicle lane in each direction and one separated bicycle lane in each direction. So my question to staff in looking at this language is, is it possible to amend the language? And what impact would that have on the projected fiscal amounts that are written in to fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty twenty-three, twenty-four? Because I don't think we want to not pave the road. But what Councilmember O'Neill seems to be asking for is not study the idea of having designated bike lanes.
That is exactly it. Thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer.
So staff, can you please take a look at that?
Yeah, I, I mean, the, the council can't have, it's the council's prerogative to, to delete or change any of the CIP projects that are, that are listed in the five-year CIP that's before you tonight. So if, if that's, if, if that's the council's desire.
If, if two, if two other council members agree with me, then I say go for it. You know, if I, if I'm in the minority, then that's fine. I understand.
The, the, the only thing that I, that I should mention is, is just want to process in that the, the, the Sharp Park Plan was included in the Bike Ped Master Plan, which included a lot of public engagement and, and was the result of a lot of public engagement. And so the engagement and discussion about this specific project and/or the pros and cons of reducing lanes is not something that would happen.
I, I made my case, if two other council members want to side with me, that's fine. If not, that's fine. I'll vote no on the capital budget project. It'll be two things I disagree with, so.
Say something, I'll say something. No, I think it would, it would make our community feel better.
Yeah.
To take it out. So I'm down for that. I'm on him too.
I think it's fun to do that. My question is, how do we do it? In how do we, what physically do we amend? What can we strike on page three eighty-five? And then I'm with, you know, approve the capital improvement program as amended. And so.
It's actually mentioned on paid, on several different pages. So that's just three eighty-five. So that's why I would, I would feel more comfortable with striking any language for a separated bicycle lane study or construction of a separated bicycle lane on Sharp Park Road. I'm all for the resurfacing. I'm all for, you know, repainting the existing bike lane that's there because that doesn't seem to be an issue.
Again, this is Lisa Peterson, Director of Public Works. So we do have, because the, the project was looking for funding along with the Sharp Park Road Priority Development Area Resurfacing Project, which is also listed in the CIP and also covers resurfacing of Sharp Park Road. That item, the Sharp Park Road Resurfacing and Separated Bike Lane Project could actually, which is, is listed in the CIP book, could be taken out of, of the CIP book and not mentioned in there. I don't know, Deputy Director Batista, did you have anything to add?
Well, I was going to say if they, if he just, if you wanted to just do the, the road resurfacing, then the bike lane project is probably, you know, approximately twenty-five percent of that, that project. So you just decrease the, the amounts in, in the columns by twenty-five percent.
However, I think we have another project listed in there, right? It's the Sharp Park Priority Development Area Resurfacing Project. And, and that project does cover the, the resurfacing of Sharp Park Road as well. I think they're put in as two separate projects due to a funding request because they were, we were looking for funding.
Oh, there it is. Priority Development Area Access Resurfacing Project is on, on the plan page nine dash five.
Yes. So, so I would say that we could just go ahead and delete the Sharp Park Road Resurfacing and Separated Bike Lane Project because the resurfacing is also covered under the Priority Development Area Project that's listed.
I understand. And now I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
And I would just add that at this point, I think it's, staff, we're all clear on, I think I did get it here consensus from three of you that you would like that removed from the budget. Rather than making a specific motion, I think it would be fine for, for, for one council member and a second to make a general motion saying, you know, pretty much what Councilmember O'Neill has already said. And then allowing staff to figure out how to implement that in the final budget documents. That would be fine.
Okay with that.
All second.
Well, we can't, we haven't had a public input yet.
Right. So we know where we're going. Thank you, Councilmember O'Neill. And Councilmember Vatalas, we'll come back to that in a second after there, or if there are any other questions or concerns from council members and we have to do public comment on this item.
I still have some concerns about, and I'm sorry, Sam, bringing it up again, of the drainage improvement projects on Monterey and Rockaway Beach and they're under on hold. And so we've been meeting with Rockaway people and is there any way that we can change like the status to ongoing or I mean.
It definitely could be an ongoing conversation. The, you know, going back to what we talked to in the previous council meetings is that we just, each basin only had so much money that we could put towards it. So if we could just get you know, some money to actually do a project. And as you know, we're also updating the, the Stormwater Master Plan. And we're, and so Monterey is going to be looked at. So definitely that, you know, there's going to be improvements that will, that will be made up there. And we'll have to determine what those improvements are and then cost them out and, and try to get funding for that as well. But Rockaway, you know, Rockaway is an interesting project just because, you know, it's, it's, we're talking about the spring. And the spring is, you know, it's just causing nuisance water out into the street and you know, with the lack of stormwater facilities on the street. You know, it's just, it's, we're, we're at the mercy of gravity. And, and it's just trying to find a place to, the lower, lowest place to go discharge. And as it's doing that, it's just leaving, you know, algae and moss and stuff. And even though we have the street cleaners, you know, regularly clean the street and it's, you know, it's making some improvements. But totally understand that, you know, it's, it's just constrained by not having funds.
Right. And I think because that was the first conversation that I've had with these, with this neighborhood that I would appreciate it being labeled differently so that we can go back and have another conversation with them. Just baby steps and see what happens, so.
So can we please reference the packet page number where that is?
I think it's probably on a couple of different ones, but right now I'm looking at package page three thirty-four. And it's just listed as an on hold program.
Beach Avenue Drainage Improvement. And so it's plan, capital improvement plan page nineteen dash.
Packet page three, three sixty.
Thank you.
There we go. Okay. Thank you. Okay, well, right off the bat, I'm confused because this says six thirty-three Rockaway Beach Avenue and I thought it was at six twenty-five. And so maybe there's two, two springs that we need to be addressing in that neighborhood. Okay. So what do you propose we do, Mayor Protem? How do we address this staff? I understand you don't have a funding source, but how do we escalate this or?
I, I think I would just like that the status changed instead of on hold if it could be ongoing so that it can be ongoing.
Understood. Staff?
Yes. We can change the status.
Okay. Thank you. Ongoing. So we have two items that we're amending in the final document, correct?
Yes.
I think, I don't, I think we've just discussed two different items.
So are we, for that first one, are we just removing it altogether? That's, that's what I'm hearing. Is it the whole entire project?
Like Director Peterson said, because there was an overlap in the, the paving of the road itself with the PDA project.
All right.
Madam Mayor, it would be a great time right now to hear public comment before, before we get into specifics about.
Oh, right, deliberating and all that.
Correct.
That's fine. We're going to go to public comment. Are you ready, Mr. Montemayor?
Yes, Mayor Beckmeyer. While we're getting the timer pulled up, I'll note that there is one hand raised from a phone call-in listener ending in one six zero six. If there's anyone else that'd like to make comments on this item, please raise your hand at this time. For our call-in listener, please state your name for the record. You're now unmuted.
There you go.
I, I do agree here. Very good discussion. Thank you very much. I concur with both of those. Now I was just noticing, I've talked about the appeal field fee before and I notice it's gone up but very little. But I've compared it to people behaving badly. When they have a second offense, only have to pay four hundred dollars. And so, and that would be for around the good old fireworks, even though I'm not talking about illegal fireworks. It's for adults selling to minors. It's for people not using the right location or the right permits for a stand. They're paying less than a law-abiding resident who wants to appeal to, to their electeds. And then for a construction permit, for not having a construction permit, they pay what? Three forty-five. And then I believe the, for a masseuse who doesn't get, you know, pass inspection or get a permit is doing two things. They're paying less for their misbehavior. And they're also taking away from legitimate masseuses who go through a lot of work. We had a lot of discussions in the past about that to make sure that legitimate masseuses don't get, you know, pushed around by those who don't bother. So I'd just like you to take a look at that. It's late tonight and you've already had a good discussion. But somewhere along the line, it's, it's just concerning that, you know, people behaving well who want to appeal to their electeds have to pay more than people not behaving well. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment.
You too. Our next speaker is Remy Tan. Remy, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, Remy Tan, Pacific Manor again. Just wanted to point out that I didn't see the escalation on the, the City Hall project as well as I see you have Espinada Infrastructure Project, so I'm not sure if that, you know, entire, you know, project is, is in there because it looks like that one is also going through escalation as well. And not sure how much you have for the, the, the pier repair project because that looks like that looked a little more serious than before. So I just want to make sure that, you know, asking if, if those escalations are in, in budgets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm not seeing any more hands raised at this time.
Okay, then we'll close public comment and come back to council. With regard to Mr. Tan's question just now, the projects for the the city, the Civic Center project and pier repairs, do those go into the capital improvement program, Mr. Batista?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The, he asked if they escalated. The question is during the, the development of the cost model, typically our estimators do, do, do an escalation to the midpoint of construction. So that's a typical standard way of, you know, of costing out a project.
Okay. So that clarifies that question. And was it the same question regarding the pier?
Oh, now in terms of the pier, we our, our assumption was that we got a cost estimate to fix the pier. And we, we do, you know, just a very short, small escalation because we thought, hey, this is a pretty, this would probably, you know, gain traction, especially if we're going to get a grant. And, and so with that, there is a small escalation because it's one of those projects that once we get it, it's, it's pretty easy to just it's very shovel-ready and ready to go.
I see. Okay. Any other questions on those items or any other items, council? I'm not seeing any, but right now my screen is doing weird things like half the people are frozen, so I can't even tell if you can hear me right now.
So I'll make a motion. I adopt the resolution approving the fiscal, can I just do all five motions at once, Michelle? Or do we need to vote on each one individually? I'll do them one at a time, I guess.
No, I'm sorry. I apologize. My mute was on. You can do them all in one motion. You don't need to do.
I would just, I would just like to point out that the second item regarding the Roy Davies Fund does require four fifths of vote.
My apologies. Thank you for catching that.
We'll do, I'll do that one separate then here. Adopt the resolution approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two operating and capital budget as amended by the council tonight. Adopt the resolution establishing GAN appropriation limit for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Adopt the resolution approving the city's annual review of the investment policy included as exhibit A to the resolution with no changes for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And adopt the resolution approving the city's fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two master fee schedule as included as exhibit A to the resolution.
Second.
And we have items ten dash one as amended, ten dash three, ten dash four and ten dash five moved by Councilmember O'Neill and seconded by Councilmember Vatalas. Begin with the roll call vote with Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatalas.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And items ten dash one as amended, ten dash three, ten dash four and ten dash five are approved unanimously.
Okay, moving item ten dash two, adopt the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Okay, moving item ten dash two, adopt the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two capital improvement program appropriation of nine hundred ninety-five thousand two hundred from the Roy Davies Trust Fund by four-fifth vote.
Second.
And for item ten dash two, uh, moved by Councilmember O'Neill, seconded by Vatterlos. A roll call vote starting with, uh, Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And ten dash two passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, item eleven. Consider appointment of two council members to an ad hoc subcommittee to discuss the Pacifica School District with this Pacifica School District mutual interests and opportunities related to the city's municipal corporation yard site on Malagra Drive, the school district's offices site on Raina Del Mar Avenue, and affordable housing.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. I'll, I have a brief presentation on this, and then, uh, I do know that, uh, Councilmember Big Stick had requested this item on, so if he has anything to add, that would be great. Uh, or a lot of this item comes from as well, Councilmember O'Neill, so he might wish to make comments as well. Um, as the council is aware during the discussion of the funding strategy for the Civic Center, the, the concept of public-private partnerships came up and was discussed. And part of that discussion led to, because of a lot of lead time and complexities for public-private partnerships, which didn't match up to the urgency of the Civic Center project, led to the idea that, let's think, uh, years in advance about future facility needs and the idea to start exploring a PPP, public-private partnership, potential opportunities related to the city's, uh, corporation yard site on Malagra and have conversations with the Pacifica School District about, uh, their, uh, district offices and the possibility of, uh, affordable housing in the mix as well. So the item before you is, um, and I, and I previously during the Civic Center conversations, I had spoken with the superintendent from the Pacifica School District about this concept, and she had said, you know, sure, let's, let's talk about that, you know, sometime starting during the, during the summer. Um, and so this idea is to, uh, formally take the action of appointing a two-person ad hoc committee, limited-term ad hoc committee to engage with the Pacifica School District to start exploring common interests, uh, related to this sort of public-private partnership project. And if the council is in, interested in appointing the committee, as we always do with ad hoc committees, is to, uh, decide who will be on the ad hoc committee as well as to just specify the, the scope of, uh, the, the committee's initial inquiry. And I'll, I'll stop there and turn it over to either Councilmember O'Neill or, or Big Stick if they have things to add.
Gentlemen.
Um, since I was the one who requested it added, um, I'll say that personally I spent a little time agonizing over, um, the fact that we are not going to be going in that direction for the Civic Center um, because I really did care for, um, Councilmember O'Neill's vision. And then every direction I tried to take it, um, I came up against the wall of time given that, um, there's this sense of urgency that, for the sake of, uh, the health and welfare of our staff, we don't have the time to flesh it out, at least not to the best of my understanding. And I mean, my cousin of mine was sending me, um, uh, Columbia Heights, Minnesota. They did a similar thing, and so I was trying to follow up with that. Um, we had this wonderful presentation on Friday night about Berlin Games Post Office, um, PPP project where I was about to use that as a catalyst to ask more questions, and they were like, yeah, it was the culmination of a ten-year vision. Um, and every time I tried to take a step in any direction, time kind of slapped me down to the ground. But I didn't want to throw the, um, potential for the proverbial baby out with the bathwater. And so I figured that if it's going to take time to do a thing, if there's any chance that there's still a way we could do a thing, um, I would like to see that start happening now rather than it getting lost in the future. So that's where I'm at.
Makes sense to me. Councilmember O'Neill?
Um, the only comment I would make is that, um, this, the recommended action is to specifically affordable housing at the district office and our corporation yard. Um, when I was on the school board, the largest owner of real estate in the city of Pacifica is the school district. And I, I think it would be good to maybe rephrase this action to items of mutual interest for discussion, housing, whatever. I mean, I know there had been some discussion there about the affordable housing back in Onstad that they might want to partner with the city because of just various issues back there. Um, so I, I would maybe like to see maybe a little bit broader conversation than only, can we do it here? No. Okay. Subcommittee's done, you know? I mean, there might be ideas for purchasing or whatever that might be able to come up.
Uh, but I'm going to ask a clarifying question. Are you thinking, are you both thinking along the lines of this involving affordable housing? Or would you not want to pin it down to that?
Oh, affordable housing, yes, yes. Well, I'm speaking for myself. I don't know. I don't know who else, or if I even would be on the subcommittee. But the, I'm, I'm thinking of a broader spectrum to see what cost savings we can do for the citizens of Pacifica and with a specific emphasis on affordable housing.
Does that concur with what you were thinking, Councilmember Big Stick?
Uh, that's fine with me, yes.
Um, well, then I move that we appoint, uh, Councilmember O'Neill and Councilmember Big Stick to the committee, to the ad hoc committee.
I would just, Mary Beer and I are already the subcommittee for the school district.
Oh, okay.
Not trying to stab Tiger out at all.
No, that was my understanding was, um, given your relations to the school district, the two of you would be the, the better choice.
Okay, Councilmember O'Neill and Councilmember Beer, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Beer on the ad hoc committee.
Do you think we need public comment?
Yeah, that's what I was about to say. We do need public comment, and this would be Mr. Montemayor's.
Yes, Mayor Beckmeyer. We have one comment from Remy Tan. And while we get, um, wait a few seconds. Okay, great. Thanks, Sarah. I'm here, Remy. You may now unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Remy Tan, uh, Pacific Manor. Um, uh, this is a great idea. PPPs that are used by, uh, the state court system on realizing, uh, complex, uh, projects. And, um, I agree with, uh, Councilmember O'Neill. The school district has a lot of property, um, including, I think there's a closed school up in Fairmont which, um, they, they can't use for a school because of the seismic, but you probably can put some kind of maybe modularized housing on, on that site, um, and, you know, do something creative there. And, uh, so this, this is a great idea to get, um, affordable housing there and for the city to meet its arena. And, um, you know, I agree that, you know, we should look at things like the, the old sewage treatment plant, um, city council chambers and any, any other city parcels to develop, um, you know, into mixed-use, um, housing projects so that, you know, we meet our arena. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have no more hands raised at this time.
Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to council. I just have one question. Mayor Pro Tem Beer, are you accepting the, um, nomination by the Councilmember Vatterlos?
Oh, yeah, sure. I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Councilmember Vatterlos moved. I'll second to, uh, form an ad hoc subcommittee. What did you say, Sue? How did you say?
To form an ad hoc subcommittee to speak with the school district. And I, um, also nominated Mike O'Neill and Mary Beer.
And are you okay expanding the subject matter to more than just, uh, the corporation, city corporation yard and school district, district office?
And amending to say any properties?
Secondary.
And, and, and uses.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. And just, just for Remy's information, they've already sold Fairmont School. It's not available anymore.
Yeah. Okay, motion and a second?
Motion was by Vatterlos to appoint, uh, Councilmember, uh, O'Neill and Mayor Pro Tem Beer to the ad hoc subcommittee, uh, with the purpose as amended, seconded by Mayor Beckmeyer. I'll do the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yeah.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And that passes with a vote of five to zero. And, uh, Mayor, we're at eleven forty-three PM at the moment, um, so that leaves us with fifteen minutes to, uh, for our last item.
And, and I believe we can make this in, in ten minutes. I have a very short report.
All right, and let's move on to item twelve, uh, City Attorney.
Yes, Madam Mayor. So this is really just a continuation of our currently existing moratorium on commercial evictions that the council adopted back in January of this year. It is expected to expire on July, in July, July twenty-third of this year if the council does not move forward to extend this, um, commercial eviction moratorium um, through September thirtieth. The governor has extended our authority to extend commercial eviction moratoria through September thirtieth. Um, so this is really just an administrative follow-through. Should the council desire to extend our existing commercial moratorium through September thirtieth, if the council decides not to extend it, it will expire on Jan, on July twenty-third. So with that, we do need a four-fifths vote of the council. This is an urgency ordinance, and it is expected to go into effect immediately. Um, but it does require a four-fifths vote of the council, and with that, I'm prepared to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmembers, questions? I see none. Let's check public comment.
I'm seeing one hand raised by Remy Tan. Remy, you may now go ahead and speak.
A quick question for staff on this one. Um, this, is there some state or local money, uh, to, to help the businesses and the landlords, uh, um, survive this downturn? Um, because it's also not fair to the landlord's, uh, burden to, to carry, um, this sort of thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Madam Mayor, there's no more hands raised at this time.
Thank you. We'll close public comment. Okay, so, um, is there any for further discussion, councilmembers regarding funding or anything else?
Can we just address the last question if we can, or?
Yeah, well, we've had many discussions about all the funding available through SAMCDA, the San Mateo Strong Fund, Pacifica Strong Fund, SBDCC. There's, uh, many, many meetings we've had about that, and if you wish, tune into the Economic Development Committee meeting. And I make a motion that we approve the extension as stated by the city attorney.
I'll second.
And we, the, the action is we're adopting the, um, urgency ordinance extending a temporary moratorium.
I'll say what she said.
Second.
And, uh, item number twelve, as moved by Councilmember O'Neill, seconded by Councilmember Big Stick. My roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And, uh, item number twelve passes unanimously.
Very good. Thank you.
All right.
Very appreciate everyone's patience through this long agenda. And, um, we will adjourn the meeting at eleven forty-nine PM.
Good night.
Good night.